President Canepa, the time is now 9:00 AM and you can call the meeting to order.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. Good morning, colleagues, staff, members of the public. It's 9:00 AM on April 8th, 2025, and we're calling this regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to order. Let's start with having the Clerk of the Board provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom via laptop or computer, please click the Interpretation Globe icon and select the Spanish language. If you're using smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select Interpretation, and then select the Spanish language, and then finally click Done. At this time, I would like my colleague to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you. Gracias. Buenos dias, estimados miembros del público. Se brindará interpretación en español en vivo durante toda esta reunión. Para acceder a los servicios de interpretación en vivo en Zoom, si se conecta a través de una computadora, haga clic en el icono del globo terráqueo, que es Interpretación, y seleccione el idioma español. Si está usando un teléfono inteligente o una tableta, ubique el menú de los tres puntos, seleccione Interpretación, luego seleccione el idioma español, y finalmente haga clic en Finalizar. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for those instructions. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Supervisor Spear is absent. Supervisor Corzo?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Gaucho?
Here.
Thank you. And then President Canepa?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to honoring the life of, and Board member remarks. Do any supervisor have comments or things to share for honoring the life of? Supervisor Corzo?
Good morning. Today, I would like to honor the life of Cynthia Eagleton. Cynthia was an alum of UC Berkeley and San Francisco State University, and she worked at the San Mateo Adult School for over 23 years. She was a classroom teacher for the English as a Second Language program and piloted innovative classes in online writing, distance learning, and classes connecting students to ESL learning through handheld devices 20 years before the pandemic. She also taught parent education, childcare provider training, memoirs, and art-focused day program for older adults. Cynthia was a true educator, and she made sure that she educated people not just in classrooms but in the community. She was also a huge advocate for social justice movements and tenant protections, et cetera. She leaves behind her, I believe, 93-year-old mother and her 24-year-old daughter. And, you know, may her memory be a blessing. And she was actually also a friend of mine and a huge supporter. So I will greatly miss her very long messages that she would send me every couple of months and all of the love and care that she shared with everyone that crossed paths with her. Thank you.
Great. Are there any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll move to public comments. This is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for members of the public to comment on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors but that are not on the agenda for today's meeting. For matters that are listed on the consent agenda, for matters that are set for closed session, public comment will be limited to one minute. I'll ask the Clerk to start with the public comments from those here in the chambers. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have two speakers. First is Larry Moody, followed by Jose Reyes. Mr. Moody? Okay, sure. I'll call you then. Sure. All right. Our next speaker is Jose Reyes.
Mr. Canepa, ladies and gentlemen of the board, public, my name's Jose Reyes. I'm coming here today to speak on the topics of hate, racial injustice for all, and in which San Mateo County has several, and police misconduct, and false statements. To charge me with crimes where were the truth and facts where they applied would prove these acts of misconduct by Redwood City Police, Belmont, San Mateo, and South San Francisco Police Department. Officers' acts of misconduct, false reports, were used to target Mr. Reyes in an attempt to incarcerate me, to assist in avoiding exposure of a crime, of assault and illegal use of restraints, false imprisonment to one Mr. Jose Reyes whom has lived and worked in San Mateo County for over 46 years. And three months prior to the assault on Mr. Reyes, was suffering from spinal damage, hip shoulder damage, from a 10-foot fall on a local 16-union job, working for a company called Metro Electrical, whose fault was claimed and has made Mr. Reyes homeless and easy for San Mateo County. Justice system racially and unjust target Mr. Reyes to intimidate, retaliate Mr. Reyes for speaking out on his heinous crime and whom was facing trial on the acts of the 11th of this month. San Mateo County Executive has filed claims over false statements, and Ryan Monaghan filed claim of alleging retaliation, behavioral intimidation.
Mr. Reyes, if we can wrap up.
I'm almost done. Executive Callagie stated to the press, his attorney, "Those who make false statements and engage in wrongful conduct in attempting to cause harm should be held responsible." They use the power of the Judge Cordell, the FBI, and the Attorney General's office to expose these crimes. Now I'm asking the President Dave Canepa and the Board to seek the same powers to assist its citizens of San Mateo County, its most vulnerable citizen, a disabled senior Hispanic, one Mr. Jose Reyes. I also seek the help of the public in seeking counsel to help represent me. 650-418-5813. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I don't have any other speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. We have three hands raised. I'll start with Martin Fox, followed by Belinda Hernandez Ariaga. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, my fellow veterans. County Attorney, Mr. Niblin. President Canepa, thank you, and Supervisor Spear, Corzo, Mueller, and Gautier for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families by supporting a vigorous implementation of the Governor's Care Card Program, including the Health Department's immediate implementation of Senate Bill 43, make the reinduction and passage of the repeal of the Landman-Peter Short Act a top county state legislative priority, and the defunding of disability rights California Law Foundation in Silicon Valley, who defend the immoral Landman-Peter Short Act a top county federal legislative priority. California's residents needed orthia dicks-inspired compassionate mental health treatment system. The Landman-Peter Short Act's racist, dangerous, and grave disability treatment qualification criteria continues to kill people. Parents of adult children living with serious mental illness who are treatment-resistant and live in Hillsboro or Atherton cannot afford to help their loved ones escape injury and death by going to states like Utah to get treatment safely. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. Belinda Hernandez Ariaga, please unmute and begin.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I wanted to say a very special thank you to Supervisor Mueller for leading the Cesar Chavez Farmworker Week this past week. It was really meaningful and powerful. And we, right now, are seeing the big need of support even more for our immigrant community, especially in light of what Trump is doing. And we do see a big fear here with our immigrant community, and we need to think about their mental health as a medical crisis and what we're doing to do more. So thank you Supervisor Mueller, Board of Supervisors, for all you're doing. We continue to push for our community to be safe and to be cared for. Also want to congratulate Antonio Lopez on poet laureate, which I know is going to be announced today. And I want to continue to lift up our communities and advocate for it as a united San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you, Belinda. We'll now go to an unmarked speaker, just by a period. Please unmute and begin.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Great. My name's David. I am calling about the interplay between Item 7 and 12. I believe Item 12 is properly before you to declare the results of the election. But Item 7, I'm concerned about, I think that it's premature. Under the provisions of the ballot measure, it does not take effect until properly filed with the Secretary of State under Government Code Sections 2, 3, 7, 1, 2, 7, 1, 3, 7, 1, 4.
Sir, I'm going to stop you through President Canepa. You're commenting on a regular item, so you need to wait until that item comes up. So if you're commenting on any consent items or a regular county matter, you can speak, but...
Mr. President, I would just note that this is kind of a, I guess it's sort of a borderline issue. He is commenting on something that is on the consent agenda and sort of recognizing that he's also commenting on the way it interplays with something on the regular agenda. Be my advice, we just go ahead and hear the rest of the comment.
Okay. Why don't we do that? Why don't we do it relative to, not Item 7, which is on the regular schedule agenda, but we'll do it relative to Item 12, which is on the consent agenda?
Go ahead and let the commenter complete his comment.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate your indulgence. My point was that declaring the results, I think, is the appropriate action today, and I think doing anything further is premature and could be a cause of action against the county and the Board if the measure hasn't yet been properly filed with the Secretary of State. And so I just wanted to offer that caution so that you have clear procedures in place to implement a will of the voters and that this particular aspect of the procedure isn't contested. But I just want to be sure that that's clear. I have no quarrel with the choice of the voters or the provisions of the measure. In fact, I'm just seeking to be sure that the measure is properly filed with the Secretary of State before proceeding further. Thank you for taking the time to hear me, and I'm sure you'll consider this comment as you go forward.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carlisle An Young. Carlisle, please unmute and begin.
Thank you so much. I just was calling in to thank our Supervisor Ray Mueller for assisting our Water District to get our emergency repairs done in Seal Cove. I live in my speech, and our neighborhood has a slow landslide. But unlike La Honda, who received FEMA funding for their landslide on Scenic Drive, our neighborhood simply got road closures, and county planning keeps issuing building permits. So we've been neglected in the past, and I appreciate Supervisor Mueller trying to rectify that situation. So I just wanted to call in and say that our neighborhood has a lot of homes that are not in the landslide area, and we still deserve the same kind of community assistance that the rest of the county gets. So thank you very much, and thank...
Thank you, Carlisle. I'll turn it back to Mr. Clerk for additional comment.
Mr. President, I do have one additional speaker from chambers?
Yes.
Okay. Alan Moss? Yes, please.
Thank you. The last time I was in, it was actually, the old chamber was 40 years ago, and the topic was devil's slide. And that started a process that lasted 15 years, cost an enormous sum of money, and a lot of hullabaloo in the county and nearby areas. I live in Seal Cove. My home is actually in a road that is slipping and sliding. I came here today to point out to you a few things. One is, this landslide, to the extent it is a landslide, has been there for a very, very long time, has essentially never moved. The evidence of that is that the county's been issuing building permits even insofar as this past year. There are two brand-new homes right there in Seal Cove that you have allowed. In the last 30 days, the reason for everything that's happening there is a water main broke. It dropped 100,000 gallons of water underground and started everything that's happening there. In this period of time, 30 days, the county has not done one thing to do anything to the road. They've just closed it. They've told me they've abandoned it. There's been no abandonment procedure. There are deep holes and crevices in there. It's an absolute nightmare for people walking by, and people walk there every day. So the county doesn't care about that safety, but they've just red-tagged a home there to a 91-year-old woman and given her a week to get out of her home that she's been in for 55 years. The contradictions are enormous. We need your help to address this. I could keep talking, but...
Great. No, I appreciate your comments. What is your name, sir?
My name is Alan Moss.
Alan Moss. Maybe staff can reach out to Mr. Moss. That would be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Thank you. Including Ray Mueller's office would be great.
Great. With that, do we have any additional public comment?
No, that's the end of public comment, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Thanks to all who shared their comments. We'll now take the action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gaucho?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Spear being absent.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll now move to presentations and awards. We have six of these items today. We'll start with Item 1, which comes in two parts, to adopt a resolution to appoint Antonio de Jesus López as the San Mateo County Poet Laureate and to approve a proclamation designating April 2025 as National Poetry Month. Supervisor Corzo and Gaucho are the sponsors for this item. Supervisor Corzo and Supervisor Gaucho, will one of you kick us off?
Sure. I'm happy to begin. Good morning again, everyone. District 2 and District 4 served on the selection committee to appoint our county's fifth poet laureate. And we picked up the baton from Supervisor Slocum and former Supervisor Slocum and former Supervisor Groom, who established the poet laureate program in April of 2013. I'm very happy and honored to recommend on behalf of the selection committee that Antonio de Jesus López be appointed as our next poet laureate. Antonio was born and raised in East Palo Alto. He is the author of Hentification. Ooh, that's a tough one. And his book, his next book, The Right to Remain Violet, will be out in 2026. Antonio's resume of publications in distinguished presses is outstanding. He earned an MFA in poetry from Rutgers Newark, a master's from the University of Oxford, and a BA from Duke University. He is currently pursuing his PhD at Stanford and is expected to receive his PhD in June, and also served on the East Palo Alto City Council from 2020 to 2024, and as mayor from 2023 to 2024. Antonio is a gifted poet and community leader whose voice as poet laureate is one we need in this moment. I'm very excited that he'll be sharing his gifts with our diverse county to uplift our many voices and lived experiences through the art of poetry. April also marks National Poetry Month, a fitting time for this appointment. And we have a proclamation that we are hoping to pass that will declare National Poetry Month as part of this item as well. And I'll turn it over to Supervisor Gaucho for her comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo. This is an exciting day for District 4. I am proud that the new poet laureate is coming from the city of East Palo Alto and District 4. So again, congratulations. We both served as leaders in the city of East Palo Alto, prioritizing public service, which was so important to us. Antonio and I both served on East Palo Alto City Council, serving as council members, vice mayors, and mayors alike. Antonio is a talent poet. His body of work expresses what he experienced in life and in the city of East Palo Alto. I am confident that through his laudership, his projects and his projects, Antonio will inspire others to pick up the pen and do the same. So congratulations, Antonio. I am so proud of you.
Now I'd like to invite Antonio to share some words and read a poem for this occasion.
All right. Good morning, members of the Board, Supervisor Gaucho, Supervisor Canepa, Corzo, Mueller, staff. I stand on the shoulders of giants, and I always feel important, as the son of East Palo, the son of this county, to make that clear. I'm joined by a number of distinguished elected officials, and forgive me if I also forget you, but I have former Mayor John Dugan representing, former Mayor Mr. Larry Moody, former Mayor Mr. Duane Bay, who I'm sure will talk about some important housing initiatives, as well as my fiancee, Maddie Anderson. Wonderful folks in the community. I want to thank you all for coming, and not least, my friend Faye is, of course, and not but not least, Mr. Mark Clevenger, who I'll speak about in just a moment, and as well as my father, right behind me, Antonio Lopez. I just want to, before I read my poem, I want to show you all something. I didn't even tell Mark about this. This is a book by Oscar Di Coelho, who's a fiction writer, called Thoughts Without Cigarettes. Mark gave this to me when I was his student at Menlo School in 2012. And in it has an inscription which says, "To Tony, I have every confidence in your future as a writer. It has been an honor to be your teacher and friend." And I say to him, "It's been an honor to be your student and friend," and it's signed May 31st, 2012. So I say all that to say, I'm not here by myself. I've been blessed to have so much support and so much, come from such a beautiful cultural wealth in Jim, that is East Palo, and that is San Mateo County. And I want to thank the selection committee as well, from Gaucho and Corzo's office, as well as Mara, Amy, all the wonderful folks who just heard me ravel for 45 minutes in the 5th floor and decided, "This guy should be our poet. This guy should represent us." I hope you don't regret it in a couple of months. But seriously, I'm going to deliver a poem now, and I hope you enjoy it. "County be my name. Por la señal de la Santa Cruz Mountains lies a tomb with my own name. Antonio López II, February 5th, 1938. There's a happy ending to all this. Else, there's no point in being here. This here that hauled your parents into a country of a county taken for gold and granite. Once aloney, Spanish, Mexican, American, no wonder your name bounces off the walls of every hyphen. The taste of blood and sea salt, where surfers chase their death wish. The devil's trail, the deadly waves of a zip code. What man-made bluffs, the US 101. This long stretch of wild, wild west side once whiskey gulch. The grave bet placed on our kin, all in our businesses, our witnesses. The heels of palm shovel the last moms and pops, 83 stores and all. What a trip for the passage of time to be branded the Four Seasons. Breathtaking, isn't it? And yet, here we is. I think about this a lot. What if I was born in Mex? If father never crossed? If a Republican president never signed the amnesty into law? I would have never signed the Pledge of Allegiance at kindergarten. Would have never had Slocum sign my birth certificate. Would have never been a resident, a newborn son of EPA. What a strange act for papers to ask an infant, "Do you wish to run?" As if there exists a divine right reason for the stroke of citizenship. As if once upon a bloodline, a ship wasn't granted safe passage. A guard didn't doze off. A policeman didn't rubber stamp the face of your face from Manila, or Michoacan, or Louisiana, or a little place in Polynesia called Samoa. We all from these shores of somewhere. We all come from a tradition where you learn to grow up fast by giving speeches to the dead. And not a day goes by I don't see Mama Dee again. Fresh United Methodist, her body is light as a proclamation. Look, truth is, no politician is born to do this. You learn to lead the ship amidst an ocean of Pacific islanders. Look, whatever side of the aisle you hail Mary, we all want a woman who looks like her mothers to whisper, "You're going to be okay without me, mijo." To be loved enough that someone drove halfway around the edges of this earth for you, westbound, down the 92, to attend a six-hour study session in the city of Half Moon Bay, wade through a midnight of slides, Q and A, and each speaker will have 60 seconds to convince me of their humanity. To convince three out of the five, yes on 555 Kelly, yes on 555 Kelly. Oh mercy, mercy, housing, may we live in a country where the people who pick our food have a roof over their bullets. May they never have to wake Marciano Martinez again. May our children never walk through the fields of ice. May our children never fear any color or uniform leaving middle school. May all living things in SMC have free enjoyment of their liberty and Wi-Fi. From the elf and butterfly of San Bruno, from the man dressed as a crow selling Fiesta Insurance down Middlefield Road. And give us this day our daily city, these fog horns in the distance guiding ships home. From the roar of plains and milbrey, to the sea urchin of Moss Beach, from the weathered pews of Court Room 2A, where I saw Fabian get sentenced to life with the possibility of a poem. From a Superior Court, just two football fields from where we stand. From having to show your backpack entering class. From our grandparents who first whispered, "North." From South San Francisco, the old towns of factories and meatpacking plants. From the blocks of Lucifer and Cheese as a kid, the frozen cans of orange juice. From the check in Mom's hands as she walked the ramp of the WIC office. From her heart, she'd recite the number of our Kaiser cards. From the quiet chorus through three-inch glass, "Do you have a pen, ma'am?" To the one I wield because of her sleepless pats. In the name of the Father, of my Father, and the Son, the One behind me as I speak, I humbly accept this appointment to be the fifth laureate of San Mateo County. Thank you.
Gracias, Antonio. Felicidades. That was beautiful. Thank you for sharing your gift with our county and for kind of speaking to our souls for a second and giving life to the reality of our community, our history, and tying it all together so beautifully. Thank you. With that, I think, would anyone like to add some comments, and then maybe we go to public comment?
Is there anyone who would like to add some comments?
No, I just said, I think this is the first time I've actually heard you actually recite your poetry in person, and we are blessed, really, to have you in this county and in this position. I'm really excited for what you're going to do, look forward to working with you, and again, for all that you're going to do, not for the youth, for East Palo Alto youth to see you and what you're doing will mean the world to them, because it lets them know anything is possible. So again, congratulations.
Great. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one speaker from chambers, Larry Moody, and then we'll take speakers from Zoom.
Good morning, President Canepa, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Mr. Rodriguez. Wasn't that amazing? You know, I join you, and I'm so excited for Antonio's appointment as the poet laureate for San Mateo County. When he begins talking about standing on the shoulders of giants, we can't help but think about Mr. Warren Slocum, who a decade ago decided that he wanted to replicate what he... that he wanted to replicate what he was seeing in other counties and bringing it into San Mateo County. To not only to create a pathway for the arts of poetry, but more importantly, to strengthen our library system, to offer another pathway to draw people into the corridors of our libraries. And we have an amazing library facilities, system, and here in San Mateo County. Certainly something to be very proud of. Antonio will be a bridge builder. You know, it's easy to identify him as someone that's going to work with the young people, but he's also working, going to work with young professionals who are beginning to come back into San Mateo County with their degrees in hand, who are looking for an opportunity at affordable housing and looking for an opportunity to be contributors. Antonio also loves sitting with seniors. And not only in the East Palo Alto community, but you're going to find that he is going to spend an equal amount of time with our seniors throughout the 21 cities of San Mateo County, trying to make sure that their stories are heard and that he can help them articulate it in such a way that we can benefit from hearing the voice of our elders once again throughout San Mateo County. Finally, Antonio is a, he's a jewel, a gem, but there's many other Antonio Lopez's who are emerging in San Mateo County. Let's create a platform for them to be heard. Let's be great listeners as elders, and what we'll find is that we're continuing to create a better San Mateo County. Thank you.
Additional comments, public comments?
None from chambers. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. We're on item number one. We have two speakers, Kelly, followed by Belinda Hernandez Ariaga. Kelly, please unmute and begin. Kelly, if you can unmute your microphone, please. Okay, I'll come back to you. We'll now go to Belinda Hernandez Ariaga.
Congratulations, Antonio. I'm so proud of you, and I want to thank the county for the selection of Antonio. I also want to highlight that he's been very active in telling the story of our Half Moon Bay community, especially the farmworkers that lost their lives through the tragedy in Half Moon Bay. And Antonio was able to travel with us to go to the funeral of Marciano and represented our county in a way that was so profound because not only does he bring back the story, he brings back the spirit of the community, of those that witnessed the life lost in those of our farmworkers. And it's been an honor to be able to hear and be in community through the stories of Antonio, through his poetry, through his sharing of his heart and soul. And I know that will continue in our county at a time that's needed the most. And storytelling is resistance, and I want to thank Antonio for being that for us this year and moving forward. Thank you, San Mateo County.
Thank you. One last attempt now for Kelly's iPhone. Kelly, please unmute and begin. Okay, seeing no response, Mr. President, that concludes public comment.
Can I have a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Corzo. Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Goche?
Yes.
And President Canepa.
Yes, and I just want to say congratulations, Antonio. I've known you for a very long time, and what you've been able to accomplish, not only as an elected official, but just community focused, community centered. We're lucky to have you, and I believe you are a treasure to San Mateo County. So thank you for all you do, Antonio.
Okay, and with that, we will present the proclamation.
We'll now move to item two, which is a proclamation designated in April 2025 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. As the liaison to the Arts Commission, April, I'm honored to present this next item. April also marks Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, which is an important opportunity for our county to celebrate arts. We usually think of art as a nice-to-have and not a need, but it is truly a need, especially in difficult economic times. The arts are a critical component of our economy and produce nearly $300 billion and 8% of the California economy, contributing to nearly 850,000 jobs. I also believe that arts are even more important during difficult times because they give a voice to diverse communities, foster empathy and understanding, inspire civic engagement, and are a much-needed source of personal expression and hope. I want to take this opportunity to thank Amy Shapiro, Executive Director of the Office of Arts and Culture, and Mara Grimes for their work to uplift arts in our county. And I'm honored to invite Victoria Magbilang, Chair of Arts Commission, to share about the commission's work. And I'd also like to acknowledge Lois Fried, Reno Anowai, and Giann Heisi from the Arts Commission, who are also here today, as well as our former county poet laureate, Lisa Rosenberg. Welcome, Victoria.
Hi, thank you. San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for having me here today for the celebration of Arts and Culture Month. I'm Victoria Magbilang, Chair of the San Mateo County Arts Commission, proud to be in Board President Canepa's district, District 5. I'd like to take this opportunity to share some information about our commission and why it's so important that arts and culture are valued and supported at the county level. Some of the arts-related activities with which I've been involved in my own district include spearheading and managing the installation of a mural in Daly City, designed and painted by students at nearby Jefferson High School under the direction of the Bay Area Mural Project. Another project, of which I'm very proud, is establishing the Daly City Youth Poet Laureate Program. Our program was the first of its type in all of San Mateo County and celebrates teen poets who live or attend school in Daly City and exhibit a commitment to artistic excellence, civic engagement, leadership, and social justice. Next slide, please. "The mission of the San Mateo County Arts Commission is to champion the arts as essential for a healthy and vibrant community by shaping innovative cultural policies, creating inclusive and diverse programming, investing in the creative economy, and ensuring access to arts and culture for all. The Arts Commission exists to promote and encourage the arts, to serve in an advisory capacity to the Board of Supervisors, to prepare and update the county's strategic and cultural plan, and to act as a liaison with arts organizations to ensure collaboration related to culture and arts activities in San Mateo County. The commission consists of a diverse group of arts advocates, including musicians, poets, fine artists, dancers, educators, filmmakers, and directors of nonprofits. Why are the arts so important? Not only because of the mental health benefits they bring to those in our diverse community, but because the arts are a great driver for the local economy. There are over 14,000 arts-related jobs in San Mateo County, which also support a further 16,095 jobs in the local services sector. This includes over 1,100 businesses and constitutes 3.4% of employment in San Mateo County. Arts and culture industries drive 7.5% of our state's economy, contributing over $289 billion in economic activity and supporting 1 in 10 jobs in the state. Arts programs provide jobs while lighting the way towards a future for our state that integrates arts and culture into solving civic issues, fostering social cohesion, revitalizing neighborhoods, and ensuring access to the tools of creative expression for all." Next slide, please. "A few of the Arts Commission's projects are the collaboration with the San Mateo County Office of Education and Samtrans on Art Takes a Bus Ride. Commissioners were judges for this year's contest, which included entries from 100 students from around the county. Planning is underway for this year's countywide celebration of the arts scheduled for September 28. This celebration is a collaboration between the San Mateo County Office of Arts and Culture and Arts Commission, the San Mateo Downtown Association, and the San Mateo Chamber of Commerce. Last year, over 60 San Mateo County-based visual and performing artists were featured with community attendance of over 5,000 people. We are also involved in Poetry Out Loud, a program in which we connect coaches with youth poets. Being named last year's Poetry Out Loud winner for San Mateo County helped Chloe Chow move on to become this year's, sorry, California State Youth Poet Laureate. One of our newer programs is the Youth Art Fellows. Arts commissioners were on the review panel to choose one youth from each district, each of whom designs an art-based project such as workshops, poetry events, and performances for participants of all ages. The Arts Commission maintains involvement in public art projects around the county, including volunteering for review panels to choose artists to work directly with the community to create murals as well as contributing to design and painting. The Office of Arts and Culture has given $680,000 in grants to San Mateo County arts organizations over the past five years, with commissioners serving on the panel to review applications. We gave $50,000 last year to support 11 deserving, yet often struggling, arts and cultural organizations across San Mateo County. This amount was a decrease of $152,000 due to loss of funding from organizations who no longer serve the arts or government agencies." Next slide, please. "Looking forward, the Arts Commission is dedicated to keeping the county Board of Supervisors updated on arts and cultural activities within their districts. We are also working closely with the San Mateo County Fair leadership to support the Fine Arts Department exhibition, the largest such art, dance, and music show in the county. Commissioners have plans to meet with arts and culture organizations within their districts to assess their needs and how the county can best help them thrive. And we are committed to collaborating with representatives from the New Center for Creativity in Redwood City, a community-organized group spearheading the creation of dedicated art spaces for the county. Thank you, supervisors, for sharing in our passion for the arts and understanding how important they are to the well-being of your constituents and the health of our communities. I encourage you all to attend as many arts and cultural events in your districts as possible, where you will see firsthand the positive impact the arts have on the people who live and work in San Mateo County. Thank you so much."
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all of the commissioners who are here, who not only contribute to the commission, but also make sure that our community knows about opportunities to engage, and we have some exciting ideas for how to continue to invest in arts in our county. And I hope that folks will tune in to learn about those opportunities as they come up and support them when the time comes. Thank you.
Great. Are there any colleagues who want to speak on this item? Seeing none. Do we have public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one speaker from chambers, Jose Reyes, and then we'll take speakers from Zoom.
Everybody, hello. I just wanted to compliment, I noticed a picture where it showed the hands intersecting. And I watched that mural from beginning to end, and at the time, I was going through all this ugly. So to see it take shape and structure and everything, I'm thankful for that art project because to watch it and then when they applied the meaning behind it, it showed how strong art can really influence us, lift us up, and give us strength. Because that mural, just the words that they used on that mural and the lady and the kindness of the people, and then the sharing that they did at that program for us. And to be part of the shelter and have them care enough to put a mural and make it nice for us was amazing. I thank you guys for that, and I thank the artists that were part of it. So God bless you, and thank you for what you do. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Jose, thank you very much. Really appreciate your comments. Do we have any online comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public comment on Zoom, please click raise hand for item two for Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very much. Before I hand it over to Supervisor Corzo, I really want to thank you, Victoria. Thank you. You've done so many great things in the city of Daly City, especially around the murals. And so I'm just glad you're on this board and appreciate everything you've done. I think you've been committed to this for over a decade, so thank you. With that, Supervisor Corzo, would you like to make a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Supervisor Goche?
Yes.
And President Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, but Supervisor is being absent.
All right, we'll now move to item five, which is, item three, excuse me, which is the presentation of a proclamation designating the week of April 6 to the 12th, 2025, as National Victims' Right Week. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Mueller. Supervisor Mueller.
Thank you, President Canepa. Actually, it's Supervisor Corzo and myself.
Supervisor Corzo and yourself.
I'll go ahead and start. This week is National Crime Victims' Week. We're recognizing here in the county. And it doesn't take long when speaking to the victim of a crime to immediately sense the profound psychic impact and injury from the event. The feeling of lost security and of a changed perspective of the world that surrounds them, the wound only increased by the gravity of the crime. And yet, they are asked to endure, to move forward and go on. Our job collectively is to ensure they have the highest caliber system to seek justice in response to their injury. But our job is also to make certain there's a system in place that provides supportive services, that builds community, that is culturally sensitive, that empowers advocacy, that provides information they need ongoing, and that fosters healing so that they may heal, recover, and establish a renewed sense of security in their lives, in our community, and thrive. I want to thank DA Wagstaff for the excellent and remarkable work of his office in this area that they do on a daily basis. in this area, that they do on a daily basis. And I want to express gratitude for the work of all our county professionals and advocates working on behalf of victims. I also want to thank my colleague, Noelia Corzo, County Executive Caligy, DA Wagstaff and his Chief of Staff, Shenmi Chang, for their work and collaboration on a family justice center, which is the next great leap forward in our county, serving victims of crime. This year, we celebrate the theme of kinship, emphasizing our shared humanity and the need for collective efforts in helping victims heal. Finally, I also want to thank Elisa Cool and the DA and the District Attorney's Office for organizing a walk tomorrow, April 9th, at 11:45 a.m. at Center Plaza. This is part of a nationwide event with 50 locations, 51 locations raising awareness for victims' rights. I hope the committee can join us. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and pass to Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller. I want to add that this is, this week is an opportunity to reflect on family, friends, and community members who became victims and then survivors of crime in our neighborhood, schools, and places of work. We know that victims also include those who are directly, I'm sorry, we know that victims also include not only those who are directly impacted, but also the witnesses, family members, neighbors, and even future generations. Those who commit crimes have more often than not been victims themselves at certain points. And so I just want to lift up that interrupting those cycles of violence and harm is not easy work, but it is necessary work. And that has to come with accountability and repair. So we honor not only those who told people about what happened to them, but also those who chose not to. Because we have to respect their choices as well and know that they have the right to choose what is best for themselves. And I also want to thank Chair of the, sorry, my Vice Chair, the Vice Chair of the Domestic Violence Council, Elisa Cool, for her advocacy and support of victims and their families in her role as Victim Services Manager in the DA's office. And I believe she will be sharing from Zoom. And I also want to thank the DA's office for their advocacy and kind of fierce, fierce and dignified work to bring accountability and repair, and their work to repair harm as well. Sorry, we can move on now to Elisa Cool.
Good morning. Thank you so much for the kind comments. I will do my best to add. I want to thank you all for this important proclamation and your ongoing commitment to those impacted by crime in our community. Today, we are honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the many survivors that we serve, as well as the dedicated advocates and allied professionals who walk alongside them every day. National Crime Victims' Rights Week is more than a calendar observance. It's a call to action, a moment to pause and reflect on the lived experience of survivors, and a reaffirmation of our shared responsibility to support them on their journey to healing. This year's theme, kinship, is especially important. It reminds us that no one should face the aftermath of crime alone. Kinship is about more than family. It's about community. It's about connection. It's about choosing to stand with survivors, to listen deeply, and to show up with compassion, consistency, and care. Crime leaves more than scars. It often leaves silence, isolation, and a sense of loss that can feel overwhelming. Through trauma-informed care, peer support, and community resilience, we can help survivors re-clean their voices, rebuild their lives, and restore hope. I, every year, I get a chance to brag a little bit about my team. And so this year, I'm very proud to share that the victim advocates at the DA's office served over 8,000 new victims of crime and assisted victims in requesting more than $8.7 million. Behind every crime statistic is a name, a face, and a story. We do this work because we believe that survivors deserve justice, not just in the courtroom, but in the form of healing, dignity, and choice. We're grateful for this week of recognition, and even more so for the year-round partnerships that make this work possible. Together with law enforcement, prosecutors, and allied professionals, we can continue to grow the kind of kinship that transforms and strengthens our community as a whole. Thank you.
District Attorney Wagstaff?
Mr. President, good morning, members of the board. Mr. Caligy, Mr. Neblyn, Mr. Rodriguez, thank you for your kind words. I've been hearing them on this week for many years. But every time I hear those words, I know they come from your heart, and I know that they're meaningful, and they make a difference. I'd like to introduce to you two supervisors who run the day-in and day-out operation. This is Liz Gonzalez and Sonia Anaya. They are the supervisors. They make the clock go round in our victim services. I thank you so much for honoring them. I'm sorry Ms. Cool couldn't be here. She's in Missouri, getting educated on technology to serve victims. I said, you go to that, I'll stay here. But thank you so much. It means so much to me for dealing, as I've said to people many times, over the course of my decades of work, I won't remember the cases. I won't remember so many things. But what I will remember is the victims that we served on that line. That will be the enduring memory. We can't do it without your support. Thank you very much. Not desirous of public speaking.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one speaker from chambers, Jose Reyes, and then we'll ask for Zoom.
Hello again. I thank you for this, what you just spoke on right now. It slipped my mind, because I'm a little disappointed. Because to be a victim, I was a victim from childhood. I was beat, ugly stuff, pat ugly. But they didn't have this stuff before. But to be a victim, and it not go addressed, is even harder, because it eats you up. It tears at your soul. It makes you make mistakes in life, which I made many. And I tried to change my life. But it's programs like this that we need. Because there's a lot of victims that don't go addressed. There's a lot of victims that lash out and make mistakes in life. And when you try to change your life, it's programs like that that I hope will help the victims that are in this. Because some of us are still being victims. So I thank you. And that's a very touchy subject for me, because I'm a victim now, and I'm asking for help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Madam Clerk, please proceed with Zoom comments.
Thank you. We do have one speaker, Commissioner Rasmussen, for pass. Please unmute and begin.
Good morning, Johanna Rasmussen. I'm the Chair of the San Mateo County Juvenile, Justice, and Delinquency Prevention Commission. And I want to thank you for this proclamation. I also see it as an opportunity to point out that there is more work to do on this issue. One of the many things I do as the Chair of the Commission is sit with victims and their families in the court, many of whom have had children who have been murdered. And we find that we don't often have victims' representatives there. And Marcy's law does not allow, or does not provide for translation services for victims. So as we approach this week, maybe we could look for ways together where we can enhance our victim services and make them more equitable for all members of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Great. Thank you very much, Supervisor Mueller and Supervisor Corzo. Would you like to make a motion to approve this proclamation?
I'll go ahead and move.
I'll second. And I just also wanted to add briefly that I think there are many survivors who would say that some of our systems are imperfect, and I want to acknowledge that. But I also want to just speak to the complexity of trauma and how that is really difficult when you're trying to navigate complicated systems. So I want to recognize people's pain, but also say that we can advocate for ourselves and to improve systems, while also leaving room for grace and difficult conversations that improve our system. So thank you.
Great. Can I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller.
So I'm going to say yes, but I just want to add, I would actually like to actually ask the county executive if we could go ahead and look into translation services for victims, the issue that was raised, talk with our courts. That seems a pretty relevant subject this week and a great result of our work here. But yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, but Supervisor Speer being absent.
All right, well now move to Item 4, which is the presentation of a proclamation. All right, we'll now move to Item 4, which is a presentation of a proclamation designating April 3rd through April 19th, 2025, as Public Safety Dispatcher Week. I'm sponsoring this item, and I will say a few words to introduce it. In April, we recognize a group of unsung heroes, the Public Safety Dispatchers of San Mateo County. It is my privilege to present this proclamation designating April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as Public Safety Dispatcher Week in honor of the incredible men and women who serve as the first point of contact in emergencies. When someone dials 911, they are often experiencing one of the worst moments of their life, whether it's a fire, a medical emergency, a crime in progress, or a crisis unfolding in real time. Before the police, firefighters, or paramedics arrive on scene, it is our dispatchers who answer the call, providing critical guidance, calming panicked voices, and ensuring that help gets to where it's needed the most. These professionals operate in an incredibly high-stress environment. They handle hundreds of calls every day, often juggling life-or-death situations with split-second decision-making. They remain composed under pressure, offering reassurance and direction, while simultaneously coordinating emergency response teams. Their work is the backbone of public safety. Here in San Mateo County, our dispatchers have demonstrated extraordinary dedication and time again, whether responding to large-scale emergencies like wildfires, natural disasters, or daily incidents that demand quick thinking and compassion. They rise to the challenge without hesitation. To our dispatchers, we see you, we appreciate you, and we thank you for the work you do every single day. This week and every week, we honor your service, your resilience, and your commitment to keeping our community safe. I'd now like to turn this to Christine Hollander, who will be sharing a brief presentation for this proclamation. Hey Natalie.
Hi, Sukie. It's okay, you knew. Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for your kind words. Sukie's going to help me here with our presentation. In the meantime, good morning, honorable board members, Mr. Caligy, Mrs. Rodriguez, and Mr. Neblyn. I'm Natasha Claris Pino, Director of Public Safety Communications, or PSC, as we like to use as an acronym. And I'm pleased to accept your proclamation designating April 13th to 19th as Dispatcher Appreciation Week here in San Mateo County. Next slide, please. I'm honored to acknowledge the work of our 911 dispatchers who handle emergency calls for law enforcement for the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office in unincorporated areas in San Mateo County and the contract cities of Hafnum Bay, San Carlos, and Milbury, and the towns of Portola Valley and Woodside, and for Samtrans. We also provide law enforcement dispatch for the cities of Daly City and East Palo Alto, and the District of Broadmoor. For fire services, our team dispatches for all of the fire agencies in the county, north to San Francisco and south to Santa Cruz, Santa Clara and Santa Cruz. Our team provides dispatch services for all of the ambulance in San Mateo County, as well as providing emergency medical dispatch, providing protocol-based instructions to callers to assist in medical emergencies. On the right side of this slide, you will see our new mission and vision, developed based on the values of dependability, compassion, integrity, respect, and responsibility. Through a two-year process, these values, mission, and vision were chosen by staff during workshops held throughout 2022 and 2023. By aligning with our core values, we will fulfill our mission to serve the community and promote a healthy and supportive work environment. Our team, our public safety partners, and the citizens of San Mateo County rely on this commitment. Next slide, please. Pictured here are some of our admin team, whose jobs are to support the critical work done by our dispatchers. You'll see by the numbers here, the total calls for 24. Our team fielded nearly half a million calls in fiscal year 2324, and guided more than 364,000 incidents for fire, law enforcement, and emergency services. The busiest day of the year was February 4th, a winter storm day with high winds. And there were more than 2,500 calls taken that day. Staff and PSC completed more than 8,000 hours of training during the year. Finally, calls were taken in 30 different languages. For the first time that anyone could remember, our dispatchers managed an eight-alarm fire in Redwood City. Next slide, please. I'm exceedingly proud of our department's efforts in the areas of well-being and community. Here in this picture is a picture of our team, part of our well-being committee, who organized, all year long, they organize events with Samaritan House. And our great group of dispatchers come in weekly, and there's just barrels ready to collect items. Thank you to Alicia Holcomb, who's up on the right, on the left corner. Her leadership in this committee has just been outstanding. In the beginning of 2021, with the publication of Dr. Nicole Westerkamp's analysis and recommendations for PSC, the department, Human Resources Wellness Team, county executives, and your board have all supported our systematic approach to improving well-being for dispatchers and staff. Accomplishments this year include focus on developing a critical incident stress response policy and stigma reduction and regulation practices, and producing a department newsletter. In the area of community, we have accomplished dispatcher-focused training for LGBTQIA awareness and implicit bias, including principled policing and peer support training. We have also had most of our staff complete the foundational equity trainings. Next slide, please. Our well-being committee is made up of dispatchers who are lending their voices to helping colleagues stay well. They are pictured here, we saw the Samaritan House. And this here is a slide on a walk that they rallied together with the team. As one of the few, actually, next slide, please. As one of the few accredited centers of excellence in the county, PSC is placed in a priority on training and professional development for all of our employees. We strive to provide opportunities for dispatchers to meet others in their field and to bring back innovative ideas to the county, to our county. In these slides, we have the Navigator Conference and our California National Emergency Number Association that was held this past year. And we just wanted to make sure that our team is involved in these professional conferences and trainings. Next slide, please. Drumroll, please. I am pleased to announce that this year, her peers have selected Chanel Canepa as Dispatcher of the Year for 2024. Chanel was hired in 2018 and so has been with PSC for a little over seven years. She's a dispatcher too and specializes on the fire side. I'd like to take a moment to read her nomination. I say, I, it just, it speaks highly of Chanel, her professionalism and her commitment as a dispatcher. We would have loved to have her here today, but today's her day off. Chanel Campana. Chanel demonstrated exceptional leadership and skill during the eight-alarm structure fire. With the situation escalating rapidly, she maintained a calm and focused demeanor, efficiently coordinating resources and directing teams under immense pressure. Her quick decision-making and clear communication helped prioritize the safety and manage the complex operations, ensuring all personnel were accounted for. Chanel's ability to stay organized, assess risks, and make swift tactical adjustments played a crucial role in ensuring the safety of all units. Her performance under such extreme conditions showed her expertise and dedication to her role. Furthermore, she truly deserves to be Dispatcher of the Year for the exceptional work ethic, dedication, and unwavering commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of her community. Her ability to remain calm and focused under pressure, especially in high-stress situations, has been nothing short of remarkable. Chanel consistently displays outstanding communication skills, efficiency, coordinating resources, and providing clear, concise instructions to first responders in critical moments. Her attention to detail and proactive problem-solving has helped save lives and prevent further damage during emergencies. Chanel's professionalism, compassion, and tireless dedication to her role make her the ideal candidate for Dispatcher of the Year, as she exemplifies what it means to serve and protect her community with excellence. So this was nominated by a team member of hers. And she was chosen, there were quite a few nominated, and she was selected by our larger team of dispatchers. So congratulations to Chanel Campana. Next slide, please. Promise it's my last one. As I wrap up today's presentation, I want to give my sincere thanks to my team. Finally, I want to thank each of you on the Board of Supervisors. Your support has been ongoing and invaluable. I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
Great, are there any comments or questions?
Natasha, I just want to thank you for your leadership and your work and all of your, your teams. I think dispatchers sometimes are not as visible to the community as law enforcement or firefighters, et cetera. But really, when someone has a crisis, the voice on the other line is the first one that they hear. And I think it's so important that your department is supported and have the recognition for the work that you do. And and I, I know it's not easy. So um, thank you for all that you do. And I have a question, I just want to know, are there, are there vacancies in PSC?
There are vacancies. We are not off on the hard-to-fill list anymore, so that's a great. So we've made recruitment a priority, and we've changed a lot of things in the backgrounds to I would say streamline processes. That's really been helpful.
Thank you. I, and some of your roles are entry-level, right? And people can get, I just want to, I just want folks to know that these, these are jobs in public safety that you can get training on, bilingual stipends, and it's just kind of a really important role in our community. So just wanted to make sure everyone hears that. So if you know anybody that is looking for an entry-level job, please, please think of Natasha and her team.
I appreciate you saying that, thank you. It's a great team to work with, and we have wonderful windows, the most beautiful communication center in the entire state of California. That's a big deal in dispatch, so please come. Great benefits.
Natasha, I just want to say thank you for your leadership and all that you do. Thank you for giving me a tour of the dispatch center. It's the first time I've ever seen it, and again, I'm just really impressed by the center and the work that is happening there. So again, tell everyone thank you for what they do for the county.
Thank you.
Great, and Chanel, thank you very much for, for all you do. It's, as I mentioned, it's a very stressful, stressful job. But to be recognized by your peers is, is the greatest honor. And so thank you Natasha for, for your leadership. That department is always run effectively and efficiently.
Thank you.
And so, thank you for your leadership. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have one speaker from chambers, Larry Moody, and then we'll take comments from Zoom.
President Canepa, members of the Board of Supervisors. So I'm here to wear my Government Affairs Community liaison hat for Job Train, a nonprofit workforce development organization that is here on the peninsula. And just a little announcement, we will be celebrating our 60th year on April 30th. And look forward to seeing all of you in attendance at the Hyatt Hotel. My boss is watching, so he would appreciate me getting that word out. But Supervisor Corzo, I really want to build on what you've just said, right? Job Train, we have six locations in San Mateo County, career centers. The opportunity to work as a professional dispatcher speaks to our economic mobility strategy. Great jobs, great benefit, and a great employer in San Mateo County. But many individuals don't know the pathway, where the armed rams on are to get involved with this industry, right? We, Job Train, are willing to help. We do spotlight events all the time, right? We recently brought in law enforcement agencies for their recruitment efforts. We're working with advanced manufacturing right now to create opportunities for our local communities to have a pathway into these good-paying jobs and these good opportunities. So I would encourage you to consider Job Train as a place where we can host events for this very intentional role as a dispatcher and any other vacancies that might be on, on the roads for the HR department for San Mateo County. We do a great job, we're in six locations throughout the, throughout the county, and we know how to facilitate and get the word out for those who have the skill sets but didn't know what the pathway was.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, through the county executive, maybe what we could do is with our, you know, our partner agencies, such as the one Larry's affiliated with, maybe we can reach out. So appreciate that Larry for your comments.
Yes, and Larry and people from Larry's team have been meeting with our team. Deputy Director Mitra Sidney and Jeff Collins, who's in charge of recruiting.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Public comment?
No additional speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Well now take comments on Zoom for item four for Public Safety Dispatchers Week. Dan Stajink, please unmute and begin.
Thank you supervisors, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. I, I really could not have said it better than Board President Canepa there. And I will just add the one caveat that this is the most visible county representation. More people have interaction with dispatchers than almost every other office combined. And it is far and away the method by which most residents, voters, citizens develop their opinion of county government. I'd just like to thank each and every one of these dispatchers. I've heard thousands and thousands of complaints about county employees over the decades, and I have yet to hear a single complaint about dispatchers. Please give all these guys a raise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. One more hand for Martin Fox, please unmute and begin.
Thank you very much. Dispatchers are absolutely essential. And I'm asking you to seriously consider incorporating into the the responsive dispatcher's core, mental health dispatching. Having it as a separate operation altogether confuses people on a regular basis when they're experiencing emergencies and they can't think straight because they're a family member who's had a child start beating them up. Can we please seriously take a look at joining emergency mental health services to this outstanding operation? Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. No further comments, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much, Madam Clerk Sherry. I'll now move approval of this proclamation.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Goshay.
Yes.
And President Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes with Supervisor Spear being absent.
Thank you again, everyone, and we'll make sure that the dispatchers will do a clip of the board meeting and play it throughout the week so they'll be able to hear and see the comments and feel all the love and energy and support. So thank you.
Thank you Natasha, great job. All right, we'll now move to matters set for a specified time. We'll start with item five, set for 9:00 AM. And we are, we are of course past that time. Acting as the governing body of County Service Area Number 11, we will conduct a public hearing regarding imposition of water rates for the 2025-2026 through 2029-2030 fiscal year. I believe that our Public Work Director, Ann Stillman, is here. Good evening, good afternoon, good morning, Stillman.
Thank you. Good morning, President Canepa, honorable members of the board, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Neblyn. I do have a presentation, thank you Suki for queuing that up for me. As you mentioned, I am here to present on proposed water rate increases for five fiscal years. Fiscal year 2025-26 through 2930 for CSA 11, which is County Service Area Number 11 in the Pescadero area. This is a map, just to give you a sense, for the district boundaries. The boundaries for CSA 11 were established in 1988, and they are contiguous with the urban-rural service boundary as defined in the county's general plan and local coastal program. You can see that it's pretty limited in terms of size, generally along Pescadero Creek Road and portions of Stage Road and North Street. We have approximately 101 customers within CSA 11, which are on 87 different parcels in CSA 11. And the system really includes three different wells. Well number three, which is the most recent deeper well that was constructed, being the production well that supplies water to our customers. We have two storage tanks, one that was added more recently in connection with the deeper well that was dug. So we have a storage capacity of 298,000 gallons of water, and the water distribution pipeline is approximately 11,000 linear feet. And just to make note that the deeper well and the second storage tank was a project that was paid for by Prop 84 and also some county funding. Just a brief overview of the system in terms of some of the operations. The Board of Supervisors is the governing body of CSA 11. Department of Public Works is staff to operations, maintenance, and administration of CSA 11, and also CSA 7, which is in the La Honda area. It's a small water system that we have. These are the only two water systems that the county has obligations for or operates. We do have regulatory compliance and oversight and permits from the Department of Water Resources, Division of Drinking Water, that we must work to comply with. We contract with an operator, the operator of the system is Bracewell Engineering Incorporated, and they must be state-certified per the permit. We have been contracting with Bracewell for several years and conduct RFP processes to determine who may propose and be awarded a contract. We've been contracting with Bracewell since 2011. Just some of the pieces of what it takes to operate and maintain CSA 11. We have responsibilities for monitoring, maintaining and repairing any of the wells, any of the pumps, the storage tanks, and any related components for the water system. We have monthly sampling and reporting that's required based on our permit to Division of Drinking Water. The meters are read every other month. We have an annual report regarding consumer confidence, reporting on the water quality that's required. We have an alarm system that needs to be tested to ensure it's working. All of the connections have backflow prevention devices to ensure no cross-contamination. Those must be tested annually. We need to exercise the hydrants to ensure that they're working and flush those as well annually. And then we have responsibilities for emergency response, any repair, investigation, communicating with our customers, Division of Drinking Water, posting notices, and water sampling. When it comes to the financial overview of the system, the two revenue sources for CSA 11 is a monthly meter service charge and usage based on the amount of water used by the particular customers. Those are the only sources of revenue, there's no property tax revenue that comes to CSA 11 as it was formed after Prop 13. When we set rates last, we developed a tiered rate structure for different tiers to, that are based on usage and different cost per unit of water, or 748 gallons, that increase as you, as you use more water. This really is to encourage people to conserve water. We know that this is a kind of limited aquifer, and so it's important to ensure that people are conserving water. The fund balance or fund reserve at the end of last fiscal year was $28,133. And CSA 11 really needs to increase their revenue and to be able to pay for increased costs for operation and maintenance. There's an outstanding loan that CSA 11 has because there was a water outage in 2011 that must be paid back, and the rates that are proposed are to help pay that back within five years. And then really establishing a minimum fund reserve, which we have targeted to be 50% of the annual operations and maintenance costs and a 3% replacement value of the water system. And so we're working towards getting a minimum fund reserve of $150,000. And then also just having monies for long-term capital improvements, including meter replacements and addressing or taking a look at the limitations on the existing aquifer. This is just sharing a comparison of how CSA 11 rates existing and proposed looked, look compared to some of the coastside water providers. The blue bars are the existing rates for if one person were to, if somebody, a customer were to use 10 units of water, you can see what the rates are now for CSA 11, $54.90. And you can compare it to the other four water entities that I've shared, that we are showing on the screen. North Coast County Water and a lot, a lot more connections. As I mentioned, we only have 100 Um, as I mentioned, we only have 101, 102 connections, um, North County, North Coast County Water has 12,000 connections, um, yet their rates are a lot, or the, what somebody would pay on a monthly basis is a lot greater, Coastside County Water, um, is higher, Montero Water and Sanitary District, and the number of connections are there too, but you'll also see that County Service Area Number 7, the other water system that the county operates, um, in the La Honda area, has 70 connections, and what they pay for a monthly, um, for their monthly water bill is even greater. So, um, the green is what we are proposing for the first year of rate increases, so you can still see that after rates would be increased, um, the, the, what people are charged there compared to the other, the comparator agencies is quite a bit different. Also taking a look at the finances, this bar graph really is showing, the blue is, um, the projected expenditures, what we anticipate fiscal year over fiscal year in, for expenditures or expenses of CSA 11, what the revenue would look like in the orange if there were no rate increases for the next five years, and then the line, the sort of the diagonal line is what's showing will happen to, what we're estimating and calculating will happen to the fund balance. It will continue to decline, um, to a pretty substantial negative fund balance out by year This is a graph that is showing, uh, with the proposed rate increases, what the projected revenue would be in blue, and, um, or I mean, I'm sorry, blue is the projected expenditures, similar to the prior slide, but then in orange showing what would happen to the revenue, uh, side for CSA 11, um, and how that would increase over time based on the proposed rate increases, and what the fund balance would end up doing, which would be increasing so that we can pay for the, um, expenses of CSA 11 and put money away for, um, a prudent fund reserve, as I mentioned. This, there's a lot of numbers on this, I totally understand this, but my purpose in sharing this slide, and it is also in, uh, the board report, is just to demonstrate that the top part of this table is showing the different meter sizes, uh, that are available, um, in the, in the system, and what the monthly meter charges are currently and what we're proposing into the next five fiscal years. Uh, we also are showing down below the four tiered rate structures that I mentioned, and showing, um, what the rates are now and what were proposed in terms of rate increases. Also, the majority of our customers are in tier one typically on their bills, um, with more folks, I mean, a number but not as high in tier two, and then we have fewer and fewer customers in tier three and tier four, and the increases, um, what we have been proposing is a more significant increase initially in the first fiscal year to really try to get the rates up higher, and then, um, have a lesser percent increase on the following or out years. Just to give a sense of the process, we notified our customers and property owners of a meeting that we held in Pescadero at night, um, and the meeting was, uh, held on January 21st. January 28th, we presented to your board to set today as the time and place for the public hearing regarding the rate increases. We sent, um, after the January 28th board meeting, we sent Prop 218 notices, which, um, explain the need for a rate increase, what the rates would be, what we're proposing, um, and it was sent to all property owners and active account holders, and we also provide information about what it would take to protest if people didn't want a rate increase. That was mailed as a requirement 45 days before a public hearing. We've also posted notice of today's public hearing in the newspaper, and here we are today at the public hearing. If the rates were approved, then, um, they would be effective July 2025 for the, um, for the first billing, which would be in July 2025. We prepared this presentation yesterday, we finalized it, and as of yesterday, we had four written protests that were submitted. However, uh, yesterday afternoon, late in the day, we received additional protests, so I just want to verbally update you on what we have received. Um, we've been working this morning to, uh, look through the protests and validate them, determine whether they're valid protests. Our Prop 218 notice tells people what they need to include, um, to have a valid protest in terms of their name, their parcel number, a signature, um, account number, um, and, and whatnot. So, we received, uh, 52 protests in total, and that includes those that we deem valid and invalid. Um, 10 of the protests that were received were not signed, and that's a requirement, um, so that sort of brings the number down. Um, we have, uh, 23 of the protests that were sent in were missing information, so not necessarily deemed a valid protest, um, which brings the number down to, um, uh, 29 valid protests that we've received. Uh, 44 protests are required for, um, a valid protest, you need 50% plus one. So, I guess my point in this is that, um, one, 52 protests were received, not all of them were valid. When we look at just the valid protests, the number drops down to, um, 29, and you need 44 for a valid protest. If there's determined to be a valid protest, uh, the board is not able to proceed and move forward with setting the rates as proposed. And, um, uh, it is quite a process, and we've been working on that, so I'm glad this hearing didn't happen at 9:00 AM, it gave us just a little bit more time to take a look at every single protest and look for all the pieces that are supposed to be included in a protest. Um, so, just wanted to report out on that, and thank you for listening to me, and I am available to take questions.
All right, are there any questions?
I, I, I do have a question, on the item, on the, uh, reported protests that you received that were unsigned, did they come from, were they handwritten, did they come from an email address, what's the method?
Um, and, um, let's see, we, most of them through email, so the, the batches that came in yesterday at 4:34 PM were in an email sent to us, I think there were two different batches, that's my understanding, it was not sent directly to me, but I've seen it this morning.
I, I understand it was sent in an email?
Yes.
But did, from the individuals who, who were, were making the protest, did they, did they, was it individual emails put in the batch, or how was it, how, or did they just say this person protests with a name, or how was it, how was the, what was the, the method of delivery, or of an identification?
So, based on what I have seen in terms of the protests that were submitted, um, there was an email sent from somebody in CSA 11, um, copying others that are representative or represent CSA 11, and they attached scanned copies of protests that had, they must have received, scanned them and emailed to us. So, we don't have a paper mailed or hand-delivered protest, they've all been protests that have been filled out, scanned, and then batch sent to us in an email.
Okay, but what I'm trying to understand is, where it says, when you're saying that there are 10 that aren't signed?
Yes.
Then, is it that, the, the document is filled out for protest with the name and parcel number, but there's no signature on the bottom, or how is it, what does that look like?
Correct, so I've, my, um, the way I've looked at the protests and my understanding, some of, some of them are form letters, which are very clear about name and signature, and so sometimes people just write their name in and did not sign, and others say name and were not so specific, so people have written their names in. Um, so it's, it is a combination, and so when we're evaluating these, we really have looked for all the specific elements that we say need to be included to be considered a valid protest, and working through that, um, and documenting on the spreadsheet, you know, this one's missing a signature, this one's missing a parcel number, this one doesn't, um, some don't match up with, um, like, the property owner of record or the account holder, so there's a lot of different pieces that, to really look through to understand whether it should be considered valid or not.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work on this, just so my colleagues know, my lean on this is to, although I'm, it's unfortunate, my lean on this is to, uh, recognize the intent, and then realize we have to go out and, uh, me, probably meet with 52 people and sit down and talk with them, because this is really puts, uh, it puts CSA's 11 future in a dire situation, and I'm not sure all 52 of them understand that, and so I think we need to sit down and have some, fortunately, they're all identified, and we know where they live, and there's not, uh, a, a ton of them, we can go out and sit down and talk with, and talk with all of them, so, uh, but I think we, uh, in this circumstance, really should honor the intent of those individuals, so.
Great, thank you. You know, um, Ms. Stillman, I, you know, I have a que, a couple of questions, the, the first question I have is, um, you know, you had a total of how many, um, people for the, um, how many people were in the district, is it 84 you said, property owners?
So, we have 87 parcels?
Yeah.
And then there are 101 customers.
101 customers.
Yeah, so multiple accounts at one parcel can exist and do exist.
And out of the 101 customers, how many had submitted a protest, was it 50%, 52%?
So, the protests that we received were 52 in total.
Okay, got it.
Um, but of that, 29 were valid, and when we look at it, we're really looking parcel by parcel, so, that's another, we look, if you're, you're 80, there's 87 parcels, so we need to look for, uh, we would consider valid protest of being 50% of 87 plus one as being a valid protest.
You know, I think Supervisor Mueller, the, the communication piece is really going to be, um, extremely, um, important to these, um, to these residents, because if you take that subset of numbers and you contrast the other numbers, that, there's really, there are obviously, there are people who are, are not too happy, right, with this, uh, increase, and so, you know, I'm familiar with, uh, Proposition 218 when I was the mayor of Daly City, um, had, had dealt with it, the number seems relative to the actual number pretty significantly high. Um, so, you know, I, I, I have, I may have additional questions relative to this, um, but, you know, why don't we take public comment first? Oh, yeah, sorry, Gochet.
Through the chair, Ann, thank you so much for, uh, this presentation, can you remind us again what happens if we, if this doesn't move forward? Who's going to, the water still has to be paid for.
Yes, so, that would be something to be determined, um, I know that the county attorney's office has looked into that, because, uh, you know, the first thing would be...
I, I just don't want to have any discussions about items we may need to discuss in closed session, and I think that is, there is a legal determination of what the future might be with respect to CSA 11, so I don't want to get too far in advance of that.
Before we do that, through county council, is this...
Yeah, is this a chat, something that we're going to discuss, or is my question valid, or can it not be answered in?
I, I, I think in general terms, it can be, it can be addressed, in general terms, again, I, I know that, uh, Ms. Stillman in her presentation actually made reference to some of the consequences that could flow from, uh, affair to, uh, increase the rates. Um, certainly, we wouldn't want to discuss any litigation strategy or any specific advice that perhaps count, council has provided or, uh, might provide, but, uh, I think a general sort of description of the alternatives that might exist is, uh, is appropriate. Great, thank you, Mr. Nimble, continue.
Yeah, so, um, just the outcome.
Some of the things in, in my mind, right, is that if the rates are not increased, I mean, people are going to continue to need water, um, we would evaluate, are there any reductions in services that, uh, we can provide or our operator can provide, however, we need to comply with our permit conditions. Um, we are, you know, we already do a lot to try to reduce the amount of time that we staff spend on CSA 11, and the operator, also, they're state certified, they need to be able to comply, so I feel like those sorts of requirements don't go away, um, I don't know that we really have much capacity for reducing our expenses, and yet we still have the permit to comply with and all the requirements of the permit, um, and we still have our customers that want water. Um, when you think about staff reductions or staff time reductions, I mean, does that mean not, uh, only communicating with customers infrequently or less, you know, it, it's really, I think we're in a, well, we're, it's a difficult spot.
And then can you talk a little bit about what the rate increase would support? What's covered under this rate increase again, if we can be reminded of that?
Yes. Um, so, definitely our operations and maintenance, um, so, as I mentioned, we have, so there's staff time that we spend, but it's minimal, we have a contract, uh, certified operator, and their costs, you know, are, escalate as costs do, so we need to pay for our operator. Um, we do have an outstanding loan in 2011, unfortunately, we ran out of water, um, the, sort of, the well ran dry, but, um, we really did, and, um, there were expenses that were taken on that we had to pay for, so, um, CSA 11 has a loan of about $58,800 on that, so we are trying to build back repayment of the loan, um, that was 2011, and here we're in 2025, nothing has been paid back on that. Um, also really working to have a fund reserve, it's very prudent when you have utility districts to have a minimum fund reserve, so it's 50% of your annual operations and maintenance cost, and then having a 3% replacement value, so dollar value, looking at all your infrastructure, and then assigning 3% value to that, and, so our minimum fund reserve target is $150,000. Um, and then just allowing for the ability to, um, you know, one of the things we want to do is replace meters, um, meters, uh, sort of lose accuracy with time, so one strategy, like, let's replace the meters, it's been a long time, um, but we really don't have the funding to do that, and that may help us, and then also just being able, being better positioned to be able to, um, address capital improvement needs or, or issues that really come up for CSA 11.
Supervisor Gochet, may I just add to, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the real impact here is that if the system, if the system goes bankrupt, if CSA 11 goes bankrupt, you have to remember, in the Pescadero region, most people operate on individual wells, right? And so if CSA 11 goes bankrupt and it cannot be maintained, because the policyholders have chosen that they want it to go bankrupt, those individual policy owners and parcels may have to go ahead and dig their own wells and find their own water, because they have elected not to maintain CSA 11's system.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gochet.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Gochet.
And, and then I just wanted to just remind everyone, this is an underground aquifer, how do we maintain the aquifer, um, and ensure that the water is going to, I know at one point there, the wa, the well ran dry, how do we prevent that from happening in this area, or can we?
Right, well, I think that what we understand about the aquifer is it's somewhat a confined aquifer, it's not heavily influenced by, you know, the rain that falls, um, we monitor on a monthly basis the, uh, water surface in the well, and we record that information because it does continue to drop, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, the, the well did go dry in the past, and with the Prop 84 funding and county funding, we were able to dig a deeper well to give us more capacity or use of this bigger aquifer. So, um, you know, I, I, I mean, it's always a concern of mine, it was a very, um, it was really difficult to run out of water in 2011, let me tell you.
Right, and then, um, thank you, Ann, my next question's with, can we bring this back, I know that at the last meeting, we talked about potential development, and if water is an issue, would love to really understand what's happening out there, I know, I think at the last meeting as well, some of the high schoolers can't run water or something, so we'd really love to understand what's happening in, uh, in the area as well.
Yeah, so, that's fine, yeah, we worked, we worked on the water issue for the high school, and I can brief you on that and where that stands, so.
Great, are there any additional comments? Seeing none, um, with unanimous consent, we'll now open the, uh, public hearing, do we have unanimous consent?
Yes.
The public hearing is now open, could I ask the clerk to please see if anyone wishes to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't have any speaker steps, uh, from chambers for this item, if, if, if you do want to speak, please fill the speaker step out and give it to me, uh, until then, we'll hear, um, speakers from Zoom, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, public hearing in Zoom open for item number five for County Service Area Number 11, three hands raised, Robyn Cotton followed by Dan Stejink. Robyn Cotton, please unmute and begin. Robyn Cotton, you're still muted, please unmute. Okay, I will go ahead and move on to the next speaker, Dan Stejink, followed by Michael Polashik. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Uh, thank you supervisors, um, I'd like to call attention to the, uh, the way this was agendized, the title was, "Acting as the Governing Board of County Service Area Number 11 Conduct a Public Hearing," and there's some, uh, talk about water rates at the very end on item C, but it, it isn't exactly clear. Um, whether you count account holders or parcel owners, this is the single greatest fee increase by percentage in the county's history, and the 11th hour delivery of 44 to 48 complaints tells you that, that people were not aware of... And the eleventh hour delivery of forty-four to forty-eight complaints tells you that, that people were not aware of it. I suggest you postpone this item for four, for four weeks. Hear it again, try to validate these complaints. And I would suggest that the failure of the district is irrelevant to the level of complaints. And I'm not cert, you know, I disagree with Supervisor Mueller that those who complain are electing not to maintain the system. There's a million reasons why systems go bankrupt or bad. And if you're adding development there, you need an additional source of water. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Michael Polaschek, and we'll try Robin Cotton one last time. Michael, please unmute and begin.
Hi, I'm Mike Polacek, I live in Pescadero. I'm not on the CSA eleven system, but at the request of several folks in town, I took a look at the system's finances all the way back to years ago, shortly after the increases there. And now again, I looked at it for the recent proposed changes. My most recent analysis was fairly shocking. The entire expense structure relies basically on two line items. One is the Bracewell contract and the other is county public works staff charges. As an aside, this is a very simple system. There's no meaningful treatment. The water's simply pumped from the well into tanks and then pumped to the users. So comparison to other systems is really irrelevant. The real shocker was that the system was in great financial shape back as recently as 2018, despite the sort of implications. I don't know why the loan wasn't repaid then because there were significant losses. But around 2018, the wheels came off the cart from a cost standpoint. At that time, around 2018, which is conveniently left off the charts that the staff is showing you, the costs went up from about forty, fifty thousand dollars a year to about over a hundred thousand dollars a year. So the costs more than doubled over a handful of years. And were the costs justified? I just didn't see it. There was no additional testing, no additional reports, no additional work of any sort that I could see. The charges just went up. And you could say, well, we had inflation. But these, these costs went up by over twenty percent compounded annually, which is much, much higher than any.
If you could please wrap up?
So basically, I would strongly recommend you push the pause button on these rate increases. Look at all these protest letters, validate them, they are valid. And then I would look at reducing costs, which I think is possible, enhancing revenue. And maybe with slight.
Thank you very much.
You can make it all, you can make it all.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
One final attempt for Robin Cotton. Please unmute and begin.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, good, thank you very much. I highly recommend that the board talk to us before you make any decisions. If you could table your decision for a month or two and listen to Mike and listen to some of us on the ratepayers committee, I think it'll really be an eye-opener for you. Bracewell and county staff time is a hundred percent of our overhead. The costs of delivering water have stayed flat for years. And the water loss in 2011 was not the town's fault. It was Department of Public Works and Bracewell. The tank ran dry, the alert system didn't work, and nobody had checked the system. So the entire town was down. Economically, it was a huge impact. The grocery stores had to be closed, the restaurants had to be closed. It was just a mess. And it also coincided with one of our biggest activities as the Pescadero Arts and Fun Festival. So it was a zoo. And it wasn't the ratepayers' fault that this was a failure. It was a management fault. And we should not be charged for any, anything to make that system up, come up again. It wasn't, I can't emphasize enough that it was gross mismanagement. And I think the people that had that mismanagement need to step up and identify themselves and take care of this, this overhead. But please delay your decision, let Ray come out, Dave come on out, you two. We'll sit down with all of the ratepayers, not that many. And it's like herding chickens, getting all these people together to sign these letters. And some of them, I understand, didn't have.
Thank you so much, thank you.
You're welcome. The T's crossed and the I's dotted, but we can discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That concludes public comment, Mr. President.
Great, thank you so much. I will now ask for unanimous consent to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Do I have unanimous consent? Seeing that I have unanimous consent, the public hearing is closed. Going back to Ms. Stillman, can we confirm that there is not a majority protest with respect to the rates proposed in this item?
Based on our analysis in terms of the number of valid protests, there is not a majority protest. However, as I reported, some of the protests that were invalid, if they were to be counted along with the valid protests, then we would have fifty-two protests, which would be sixty percent.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments or questions from my colleagues or?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this item for now. I don't know if it's going to take two months, but would love to, for my colleague to be able to reach out. Ray, you're shaking your head, no?
So my understanding is that we can't postpone it because of the procedures in place. But I'm going to look to county council to see if it is possible to delay it. But I think we might be stuck where we have to start over.
I think it might require a new noticing for a new hearing. And my colleague, Brian Wong, who is the lead deputy who works with public works, is, it looks like confirming my, my impression. It would require, again, a new noticing. So we, not to say it can't be done, it would just, again, require a new board item to set the hearing and then a new hearing.
So just, just so I understand this, on this item, what you're saying is if that there, if there is a continuance, that we would have to issue another Prop 218, is that correct, county council?
What I'm saying is that you would have to re-notice a public hearing. There would have to be a, yes.
Okay, so there's a difference, right? So we would re-notice the public hearing. And what's the issue with doing that?
I'm not suggesting there, there is an issue, I'm just noting it's a function of time. The department would have to come back with a board item to set the public hearing, and then there would have to be another public hearing.
Great, so just through county council, so there's a distinction. I was confused. So what you're saying is if we ask for the continuance, that continuance could be, could be to a date certain, and it's just on the hearing we just had, is that correct?
But the difficulty, I'm sorry to interject myself. The difficulty that I'm trying to understand is even if we were just to continue it, how do we create a clean record with respect to whether or not we have objections or not? So that's my, that's my difficulty is if we just continue the hearing, do we count those prior objections? Do we not count those prior objections? Is there a process by which people pull them back? I mean, there's a vote that's been part of this process.
That's right, there's been an election. So it's entirely, I mean, it's, it's hard for me to, from a, from a record-keeping perspective, whether somebody's willing to change their ballot, I mean, I think it would require a new vote in order for us to have a clear record with respect to whether or not we have a majority protest prospectively.
So my understanding, relative to the record, though, I just want, I'm kind of curious now. Relative to the record, you've already taken, we've already taken the protests, correct? All we're asking to do is to continue the item. What you're suggesting, I think, is that it would trigger something else. And that's, to me, that just doesn't line up. So what I'm suggesting to you is if we're continuing the item, we're not saying, hey, we should take more protests or take less protests. We're basically saying we are continuing this item based on what's before us today. Is that correct?
Through the chair, if I may, I think what you're asking the county attorney to contemplate is, could we take the time to validate or invalidate these protests to determine what type of vote we have here today without starting the process over? I don't know what the answer to that is.
So my, my, this is my concern. I think that unless someone has committed fraud, we have fifty people, we have fifty-two with the intent. And I'm not going to presuppose that there's fraud here. So we have fifty-two people with the intent to protest, okay? That being the case, for us to start over requires us to start over. Otherwise, we're continuing to a hearing where ultimately, we're going to be asked, was there fifty-two or not? And if there was, then the protest is valid.
But I thought, in listening to you earlier, Supervisor Mueller, you wanted to reach out to those voters to ensure that their, what their intent was. So that's what I'm trying to solve.
I do, I do. I think what we need to do, unfortunately, is today, say, we had fifty-two protests and then start the, go out, do voter education and start the Prop 218 process over again.
And to be clear, I mean, the government code's really clear that a ballot requires a signature. And you've got, actually, a number of ballots that don't have signatures. To get to fifty-two, you've got, at least was it ten ballots?
I think we have ten that didn't have a signature, and instead, their names were written in.
So, so I agree that if the board wants to move forward today on technicalities, it can. I just am not, I myself, I'm not willing to do that.
Through county council and through Ann Stillman, when was the date of the, when did we notice the Proposition 218? What was the date?
I thought it was back in February. I'd have to go double-check. It was certainly more than forty-five days ago.
Yes, just a minute, let me, we sent the Prop 218 notice that were dated February tenth. We're required to give forty-five days, mail something forty-five days in advance of a public hearing. That's what we work to comply with.
What I'm asking for, what I hear a colleague asking for, is we're asking for a continuance. Those dates and what, when people turn them in, and what was the final date? They could submit the protest letter?
Today.
Today?
Yes.
So that's totally, that's totally separate through council.
Right.
It's separate because there was, it was noticed, there's a date certain. The action that we're taking is we're asking to continue the item. So what I'm having a hard time understanding is the legality of it.
The legality, again, today was the deadline by which to lodge a majority protest. And we have received, as has been articulated by Ms. Stillman, we've received fifty-two documents, not all of which are in the form that is required in order for them to be deemed valid protest votes. And so today was the deadline to vote. I mean, on the other side of the vote are people who frankly didn't vote in favor of majority protest, who frankly have got an intent that's been articulated at least by inference as well. So in order to, if the notion is that we're going to extend the time to vote, I think that's problematic. I mean, if there's going to be.
That wasn't the case, or that wasn't the purpose. The purpose is to figure out the fifty-two votes and validate them. I heard someone say validate them, or like, can we cure them? Like, are they, if they sent them through, there are times when I will sign things, I have to do something on email, and I have to send a document in. I don't have the ability to actually add my signature to it, but by emailing it, does that then infer? I'm sorry.
So Supervisor Gochet, respectfully, what I would say to you is, I don't need it, I personally don't need us to go through that validation process. We've received fifty-two separate instances of intent. If we were to continue today to answer both your and Supervisor Canopus questions, if we were to continue today, what that would accomplish is put us into a hearing, just like the one we're in right now. We would still have fifty-two pieces of intent telling us that there was an objection to this. And we would have to, the record would not be changed because we have opened the hearing and closed the hearing with those fifty-two pieces. We would have to either, in that hearing, discard those fifty-two pieces, some portion of those fifty-two pieces to get below the threshold based on either interviews or some other documents given to us from these people that they're somehow withdrawing their irrelevant vote.
I hear what you're saying, but that's not what I was hearing. I heard that some were signed and they weren't actually on the deed or had the ability to sign. So that's what I was saying, was there a way to actually cure that and have a better understanding of which ones would actually be valid?
I think I'd like to ask my colleague, Mr. Wong, if, you know, we have any history of whether, of correcting, perfecting ballots after the, after the time for a majority protest is passed. It's not a process that I'm familiar with.
Good morning. I'm not aware of that process ever occurring. I think really what we have to work with is the ballots as they've arrived and the deadline arrived. If you think about just in a different context, in elections, you have a ballot, it is what it is in terms of what has arrived. Certainly, we could spend more time looking at it, but I think staff has looked at it very carefully already to kind of give you the categories of what they've seen. And that is what is before the board, is that is the vote that they've received. I mean, certainly, you could spend more time poring over them.
Could you speak into the mic, Brian, please?
I don't, sorry, I'm too tall. But I don't believe that there's a, there's a way for us to go then look at it and then figure out if we could, if they would change. I think that the vote is what it is as it stands right now.
Right, or stated differently, I mean, if we need more time to tabulate, if we feel like we need more time to tabulate the vote because things are coming in at the last minute. For example, if we had a system of thousands of ratepayers and we, at the last minute, got a lot of stuff, we could continue the hearing because we need additional time to tabulate. I think here, there's no ambiguity ultimately about what we've got in front of us. There may be some candidly, some ambiguity about what people's intent was because people didn't fill the forms out correctly, it sounds like. Or, but we're drawing, we're drawing some assumptions there. But I could see a continuance, and certainly, ultimately, if that's what the board wants to do, the board can continue for purposes of, you know, sort of figuring out, tabulating stuff. But I think what I'm understanding from staff is that the votes have already been tabulated.
So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and we just count the fifty-two as an objection. And we have to, we go out, we educate the public and we restart the, and we potentially restart the 218 process. But for today, I think my, my, my motion is to go ahead and honor the intent of those fifty-two objections and then, and then move forward with re-education and then restart the 218 process.
I'd submit that the ballots themselves don't reflect fifty-two majority protests per se. The board is certainly within its power to decide that it does not want to act.
Okay, then I, my motion is that the board not act, not act, and that we go ahead and restart the 218 process after some education of those who contact us and filed those, those, those documents.
So, Mr. Rebly, Supervisor Gochet also made a motion before.
I'm going to make a substitute motion, if that's okay. Yeah, my motion is that we go ahead and take no action today. We go out and with the intent that we're going to go out, interact with those who filed those documents, and then potentially restart the 218 process.
I can support that amendment.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I have a question.
So I'll make mine as an amendment instead of a substitute motion.
Can you help me understand what would be the impact of restarting this process? How much time, how much staff time, how much, like, I'm just thinking about the limited resources of DPW and all of the other projects that are being managed and the impact on the wider county. I know, for example, there is a generator that needs to go into the clinic in Half Moon Bay. That's really important to the, to the staff there. So my concern is that delaying this would impact other projects and your staff. So can you please share?
So, let me, this is, let me just tell you some of my thoughts. So, yes, we got last-minute protests that were submitted. I understand the count is fifty-two. If I were to look at the requirements that we put in our Prop 218 and what people submitted, I would say there are twenty-nine valid protests. It is a process whereby we need to look parcel by parcel, so definitely validate, that's one piece. When I think about restarting a Prop 218 process, you're noticing people of the rates you're proposing so they can understand the impact of those rates on themselves. So if, and it needs to be done forty-five days before a public hearing. So if we were to do a, start over on a Prop 218 process and propose the same rates, we could end up in the same place. So we know right now that if, if we were to do that, we would need to go to the board to set a time and place for a public hearing. The board would authorize us to send out a Prop 218 notice. If the rates were the same, we know that the Prop 218 notice would be, would be required to be sent out forty-five days, so that's a month and a half in advance. But we also need to go to the board ahead of time. So if we're not changing the rates, it would be duplicating our process from previously, and it would take at least sixty days, is what I think. Because with the forty-five-day noticing period, the public hearing, and then coming to the board ahead of time. And, and I agree, I mean, that's one of the, that's one of the difficulties that we have is when you have a very small system and you have limited revenue, it's difficult to spend staff time on these sorts of things because it's an expense to the district. And as you were pointing out, I think, with the fund balance. So hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you. And can you also just help me understand, do we know the, like, are most of the parcels, are most, are most of the parcels owned by, like, farm owners? Or do you have any background on that?
Well, we would know all the owners of record, and then we would know all the account holders. So, but I can't really speak to, I mean, a lot of the, most of the parcels are residential. There are some business sort of on Stage Road. There are some businesses and maybe a couple on Pescadero Creek Road. But I think for the. a couple on Pescadero Creek Road. But I think for the majority, it's residential customers. And so whether they're, they're renting their property or the owner of record is the one that's occupying the space, it depends parcel by parcel.
What would happen if the process is restarted and then ultimately, like, what happens if it's restarted and then we're in the same place? The rates then don't, unless approved by the board, like, their appeal is successful and then their rates don't increase? And what's the long-term impact of that?
Right. And that's part of what we would have to look at as what does the next step look like? Because it's my understanding, if there's a valid Prop 218 majority protest, the board cannot raise the rates. So they stay as they are until they're looked at at a point in the future in terms of rate increases and you potentially get a successful rate increase with no majority protest.
Though, through the chair, if I may, though, the possibility is that the system goes bankrupt at some point in time. Rates are, are staying the same, costs are increasing. So that's what the outcome would be.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to like, put this in the context of the larger county. We've seen rate increases everywhere because we know that that's the reality that we live in right now. Nobody wants to increase rates. But my concern is, we've heard so much about how expensive and difficult it is for farm workers to live on the coast side, and if their water management goes bankrupt, what, what does that do to like, the vulnerable residents there, right? I'm just, I, I'm trying to like, think it through, through that lens. And I'm not one to be a fan of like redoing things when, you know, you think about equity in DPW, for example. There are projects in the queue that are really important to really vulnerable people in this community. And so I, I don't want, I, I'm not going to be voting to support something that ultimately defers other important projects from, from being handled as quickly as possible. Because, I mean, the work of DPW is like extremely important. There's a lot of other departments in this county that rely on your work and are waiting for their projects to be completed. And I, I just don't think that it's a, a good investment of DPW's time to defer something and restart something for, I'm, I'm not sure what the outcome would be, actually, so.
Supervisor Miller?
So I, I hear you Supervisor Corzo. The difficulty that I stand in, because I don't disagree with some of your, with some of your sentiment. The difficulty that I have is as we sit here right now, we sit here as the Board of CSA 11. So we are acting as the Board of CSA 11, acting toward our ratepayers, those we do service delivery to. And of those, 52 have delivered a some sort of document indicating they are, indicating that, that there, they do not support the rate increase. So as a member of that board, I have that from 52 ratepayers. I'm not as, not as a county supervisor. So knowing that, the only way I can restart another vote, I want to ask County Council, the only way I can restart a vote on this is to restart the 218 process. Is that correct? All right. So acting toward those ratepayers, that's why I'm saying we have to go out and do education and in our responsibility to those ratepayers, honoring whatever their intent might be, go out and restart that 218 process. Now, I'm not saying we're going to, if that, if we go through this process again and we don't have, we don't have the requisite number this time in correct form, that we would go through that process again. But where we are right now, that's where I stand. Now, if my colleagues don't agree with that and they want to move forward with raising the rates, I understand that as well. I respect your position on that Supervisor Corzo, but that's where I am today.
Through County Council, through the County Executive's Office, what I'd like, is I'd like a report back on understanding what the process is, once a continuance is made on a 218, on the 218 process. So where my confusion lies, and I want to know moving forward because we deal with a lot of these rate, potential rate increases, I'd really like to understand from county staff. So my understanding is that we cannot, we cannot continue this item because it triggers, and I've heard this a couple of times, I, I think it's, to be quite frank with you, I don't think it's accurate. You're saying if we were to continue this item, it would trigger a Prop 218. And I want to make sure that that is what I'm hearing.
What I'm saying is you can, you can in fact continue it. If you need to continue it to continue to tabulate votes, then you can continue it. I'm not, what I also said is I'm not familiar with a process whereby, you know, one would go out and cure defects in a Prop 218 vote.
Yeah, so there's, there's a, there's a distinction, right? And I've never, you know, we, we had a colleague who mentioned the curing process, right? My, 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 my question is totally different. So let me reframe my question so I can just get it on the record. If we were to continue this item, in your best legal opinion, are you saying this triggers a whole new process with Prop 218?
No, not necessarily. What I would be saying is if you want to continue the item, that's within your power. You know, the question of why you'd be continuing it would be, would be the question I'd have. If you want to, and, and of course, that's completely up to you. If you want to continue it because you need more time to take a close look at the ballots to make sure it's, they're being read correctly, or you want some further information that is separate and distinct from, you know, the count, you want the opportunity to go out and talk to the community so the community just is in a better place when you ultimately take action, that's fine. The parameter that I was stating that I'm concerned about is the changing of ballots or the correcting of ballots or the curing of ballots, because that is not a process that I'm familiar with under Prop 218. You can certainly leave this hearing open. You can continue it, bring it back at a future meeting.
So let me, when I was mayor of Daly City, and you, you spoke to it, basically what you can do is we continue the Prop 218 to solicit more community input. So, and for educational purposes, we're well within our authority to do that. Is that correct?
I agree you are.
Okay.
The problem, President Canepa, is you can't redo the vote.
Yeah, that's the...
You cannot redo the vote.
I don't think we're requesting, and I know this has taken way too long right now, and I, and I think the request was to redo the vote. We're not looking for additional votes. There's just some questions on the ballots. And I know that there, there are procedures that you put out, just understanding that, that more. But if you guys want to move forward with it, we can move forward with it because again, this is an item that's taken longer than I thought would take.
You know, let me just state before we take the vote that I will be voting no on this item. And the reason I'm voting no clearly is I do think in light of the, the protests that we've seen, in light of sort of the robust discussion that this item should be continued to a future date. So, Mr. Mueller?
I don't think we have the votes then because we have two no's. So if you want to go, I'll withdraw my motion and one of you can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the item. Roll call, please.
I'm going to be voting no on that because I think it just puts us right back into hearing where we are today. We're not going to have cured votes. We're going to have 52 pieces of intent and a record that if we try to take action at that next meeting, the record will be that there were 52 documents from the community that said they didn't want this. And so we're walking right back into the same hearing we're in right now. All that will hap, have happened is we'll have gone out and had conversations with the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Motion's on the table. Is there a second? I think you seconded it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Just to clarify, motion is to simply continue the item to a future.
Correct.
Okay. Supervisor Gaucho made the second motion.
Actually, I want to be very clear because this was a public hearing. I think we probably, if we're going to move the, continue the, the public hearing, keep it open, we probably should continue it to a date certain. Otherwise, we may have to publish a, a notice. So I want to, I'm checking with Mr. Wong on that.
I don't even think that the motion has the votes. I'm going to vote no, and he's going to vote no. So I think we're, I would like to, so that motion fails, I believe. Right, click.
I'll take a roll call really quick. Supervisor Corzo?
No.
Supervisor Mueller?
No.
Supervisor Gaucho? And Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Motion fails.
I'd like to move to adopt the resolution authorizing the increase of water rates.
Motion fails with, with a lack of a second.
Okay, so it looks like we have no action today. We'll move on to the next item.
Great, thank you very much. That'll bring us to item six. Item six. Yeah, hold on one sec. All right. The other item set for a specified time today is item six, which is the presentation of service awards. Matter is set for 3:00 PM this afternoon in the Regional Operations Center. We look forward to recognizing, honoring county employees at time for their long service to the people of San Mateo County. Now we're back to the regular agenda. It's now time for us to move to the regular agenda. We start with item seven, which is an informational item on draft procedures for conducting a removal proceeding pursuant to Section 412.5 of the San Mateo County Charter. This item comes from this county attorney, and I'll ask Mr. Nillman to introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say a few things by way of preface, and then I'm going to hand the mic over. So Measure A, as, as has been noted in, in certainly prior conversations before this board, has approved an amendment, a revision to the San Mateo County Charter. And specifically, it adds Section 4.1, 412.5 to the county charter, which provides for the, the board to have authority to remove the county sheriff for cause. Section 412.5C of the charter, as amended, provides that the Board of Supervisors itself may provide for procedures by which a removal proceeding pursuant to Section 412.5 shall be conducted. It's been noted that on the consent agenda today, the Elections Office has certified the election for Measure A, and that the board has approved the, the election results in Measure A. And as has also been noted in, by public comment earlier today, these results will be lodged with the Secretary of State. And then in, you know, 10 days from the date of board action, this charter amendment, Section 412.5, will become effective. Today's action is not an action item. It's, the board's not going to be asked to vote to approve procedures. But we did think that in this interim time before the charter amendment becomes effective, it would be appropriate for the board to have the opportunity, and frankly, for the public to have the opportunity to see what procedures staff is proposing at this point for, for the board's consideration, and that we would have the opportunity to receive feedback from the Board of Supervisors after the board has heard public comment on these draft procedures. As the memorandum that accompanies this resolution notes, the law firm of Hanson Bridget LLP has been retained by staff to, to work on putting together a draft for the board's consideration. And specifically, we have Mr. Alfonso Estrada, who is a partner with Hanson Bridget, who has had the laboring oar on this, again, for resource purposes, and frankly, the fact that we're walking down a road that we haven't, that no county's walked down before. We thought it was appropriate to, to work with Hanson Bridget on all of this. So by way of preface, I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Estrada to join us via Zoom. He's a new father, and so he wasn't able to travel up from Los Angeles to be with us in person today. But he's available on Zoom, and I'm going to ask him to offer you a, a brief presentation on the work he's done, and so that we have the, again, the opportunity to hear your feedback and to hear from the public. Thank you.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to share my screen and show you all a PowerPoint we've prepared for today's presentation. Give me one moment. Okay. So due to the ordinance that was passed in the beginning of March by the county by a pretty overwhelming majority, we were tasked with drafting procedures for how to conduct the removal proceeding that's been authorized by San Mateo County Charter, Section 412.5. There is the specific language from 412.5 and specifically subsection C, which calls for the Board of Supervisors and that they may provide procedures by which a removal proceeding pursuant to this section shall be conducted. We got to work in looking first at 412.5, what it dictates and requires, and then we developed a pretty robust review procedure. Just kind of before getting into the specific steps, the emphasis on it was to be, you know, to encourage impartiality throughout the process, and also just fundamental fairness to both sides, the sheriff and the county. So here's a overarching kind of bird's eye view of what's entailed. First, in order for the board to initiate the removal procedure, they have to act by a four fifths vote to start the process. Once that process is started, a notice of intent to remove, it's a written document, will be prepared for the purpose of presenting that to the sheriff and her authorized representative. And thereafter, within five days of its issuance, there'll be a pre-removal conference where the sheriff will have an opportunity to appear and respond to the allegations that are detailed within the notice of intent to remove. So that's moving from step two to step three. After the pre-removal conference, which will be presided over by a pre-removal conference officer, they will give a recommendation to the board, and then the board, again, will convene and, you know, by a required four fifths approval, issue a final notice of decision. After that occurs, then there'll be a removal, there'll be the opportunity for the sheriff to submit a removal hearing request, requesting a full evidentiary hearing occur. After that step occurs, then there'll be a separate process, step number six, of a hearing officer being selected to preside over the removal hearing, which is the evidentiary portion of the, the hearing process. That will be step number seven, and the hearing officer will preside over that in the capacity as a hearing officer or, you know, arbitrator to some extent. Then we'll move to step number eight, at the conclusion of evidence and closing arguments. Then the hearing officer will issue an opinion, which will go to the Board of Supervisors, and they'll have the opportunity to review that opinion and the administrative record from the hearing and issue their final decision, which again, will require an independent four fifths vote in order to approve and either remove the sheriff or not. Getting into kind of a flow chart here, which I think is a little bit more visual, the first step again would be the board convening and voting by a four fifths requirement under 412.5, and development of the notice of intent. Thereafter, it'll move to the pre-removal conference where the sheriff gets that opportunity to appear and respond to the charges. Step number three, the board gets the decision, the recommendation from the pre-removal conference officer, and then they will, again, independently vote. And if four fifths of the vote is obtained, it'll become final. The sheriff at that point will have the opportunity to request a full evidentiary removal hearing. They'll also be issued the hearing officer list, and the two parties will meet and strike from that list until they arrive at the selection of a hearing officer, which is step five. Pretty quickly after the hearing officer will be selected, there'll be some initial discovery, initial disclosures, and a time period in which both parties have to meet and confer and resolve any discovery disputes before moving forward with the hearing. Thereafter, the removal hearing will begin, step number nine, and at the end of that, we get the opinion of the hearing officer. Again, the board will review it. And then 12, they'll issue their final vote, whether or not to remove the sheriff. Again, by Charter Section 412.5, a four fifths vote will be required to make that decision final. So there's three separate occasions within this process that we've constructed that will require the vote, the vote of the board by a four fifths, four out of five requirement per the actual language of the ordinance. We anticipate, going back to this slide, we anticipate the total time for this procedure will be three and a half months. And the reason it is so robust is to ensure the sheriff is afforded due process and at the same time that the county's afforded due process, and that this all be done efficiently and as quickly as feasible, given the need for the sheriff's department and their operations to be managed appropriately. A little bit more on the removal hearing. It'll be open to the public unless objected to specifically by the sheriff. It'll be informal in nature, not governed by rules outside of those set forth in the removal procedures. Okay, so not, you know, as if you would be in a, under the evidence code strictly. No, these are all taken into account in the removal procedures that we have set up. Separately, each side will have up to five days to present their case. Separately, each side will have up to five days to present their case, 10 days total. There'll be a more narrow and limited discovery and then also the hearing officer will be empowered to issue administrative subpoenas as requested by the parties at the discretion of the hearing officer. So that is a kind of a summary of the process. Both parties will be presented with the removal procedure rules, which will govern this removal proceeding. So that's all I had prepared for today. Wanted to open it up for questions if anybody had.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to the board president for any questions or comments. Mr. Estrada, I'll ask you to stand by in case there are questions we want to round to you.
Great. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues?
Through the chair, I just want to say thank you for this update. This has been, you know, before us for some time now. It is a huge concern to the community about timing, so I'm glad that we were able to provide this update and want to make sure that we continue to be as clear as possible of the procedures and what's going to happen moving forward. Can we go back to the slide where it talks about the, the boxes?
Mr. Estrada, maybe I'll ask you to go back to your flow chart. And there were two different slides, I think, with, maybe we'll start with the first one, part one.
So walking through this box one, have we already gone through box one?
No supervisor. In fact, what we anticipate is that after today's proceedings, and we have the opportunity again to, to hear from you and to hear from the public and ultimately get direction, we'll come back at a future board meeting for actual adoption of these procedures and there won't be any action taken on anything reflected in any of these boxes until you actually adopt the procedures. So that's a step yet to come.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, supervisor.
Are there any additional questions? Supervisor Corso.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, maybe more than a couple, to be honest, that I think are important just for the sake of clarity and for the community to, to really understand kind of the details of how this will work. So would, would you be able to share who would be participating in the pre-removal conference?
Certainly. So the pre-removal conference will be that first opportunity for the sheriff to appear. So it'll definitely be the sheriff and/or her authorized representative. The removal procedures, as we've constructed them, call for the Assistant County Executive or their designee to appear as the pre-removal conference officer and then the county will be there through their representative as well. So that is what's contemplated as far as folks will be present for the pre-removal conference.
Thank you. And this would be private, correct?
Yes. This is not contemplated to be a public portion of the hearing. That comes in the removal hearing, which comes after, unless if the parties specifically agreed to it otherwise, but that's contemplated to be between the initial parties I described.
Thank you. And for the sheriff, for the, for, for four A, the, the removal hearing, oh, wait. I think so. No, I'm confused. For that, for the removal hearing, when it happens, it would be public unless the sheriff specifically requests that it's private and then that would make it private regardless of how the board or the county.
That's true. If the sheriff requested it be closed, it would be closed.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And that's, and that's step number nine supervisor that you're describing.
Oh, yes. Thank you. And what are opportunities for the public to provide input in the pre-removal process?
Well, there'll be lots of opportunities, including as the county's attorney just described. In order to even initiate this process, right, that'll have to come before the board and there'll be a four fifths vote. So initially, that'll be agendized, step number one, right, and that'll be something that the public can comment on. Thereafter, for the board to take any action, right, they will have to do it by a four fifths vote, which will also be noticed, but really, these procedures were built for step number nine, which you referenced initially, Madam Supervisor, and that, you know, barring any objection from the sheriff, is contemplated to be a hearing that will be open to the public, for the public to be able to attend, even if they wish to. So we were intentional about including that, you know, part of the procedures to invite the public into the actual proceeding.
But as, as was noted by Mr. Estrada, there are a number of junctures where the board would have to act in a public meeting by way of a vote and those will be opportunities for the public to, to be, to be heard with respect to, you know, these matters.
Thank you. And I also, I also just want to add to that, that the public can provide input on, on these potential procedures, I believe, in this meeting and then directly to the board for the coming weeks until further action is taken, correct?
That's true supervisor. I mean, again, we can hear from the public today and we're hoping to and, and there will be some passage of time between now and whatever time it is the board will ultimately acts and will, you know, any comments received during that, that time period, we'll certainly have the opportunity and the board will have the opportunity to consider before the board takes final action.
Thank you. And then we heard a public comment earlier today, sharing some concern about whether we are able to move forward because of something that needs to be filed at the Secretary of State.
Yes supervisor. I think the gist of the comment was that we were acting prematurely because the charter amendment only becomes final and effective after its lodge with the Secretary of State and actually 10 days after the board took action to approve the vote, which it did today. I'd note that today, the board is not being asked to take action. In fact, what the board's being asked to do is provide input. So, so I, I think it's appropriate and safe for us to wait until the charter amendment actually becomes effective before the board takes action to approve these procedures, but I don't see any legal problem with the board engaging in the process we're engaged in today.
Thank you. And then the, the process that's being proposed, what, to what standard will it be held? For example, does it have to be held to the same standards as a courtroom?
Thank you for that question. It's, it's a preponderance of evidence standard and as has been, and a preponderance of evidence standard is that it's, you know, more likely than not, the evidence shows that it's more likely than not that something occurred or that it's more likely than not that this proposition can be supported. So it's a, it's a preponderance of evidence standard, which is a common civil standard.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Estrada.
Oh, just, just wanted to add, it's the default in these types of administrative proceedings. Preponderance of the evidence is the standard, the default standard.
Thank you. And then what guardrails are being proposed to trust the testimony that, that's going to be given to the hearing officer?
I'll ask Mr. Estrada to grab that.
Sure. Excellent question. And every witness who testifies in the removal hearing will do so under oath or affirmation. So that will be the same as if they were in a court of law in front of a jury.
Thank you. And what, what would the outcome be if someone who is subpoenaed or invited to participate in the hearing or provide testimony, what happens if they choose not to?
Well, that would be ultimately for the hearing officer to decide. There are specific provisions that have been built into the procedures that afford the hearing officer discretion on what to do, but one of the remedies that could potentially be issued would, to draw a negative inference possibly against the individual for failure to show. And yeah, but ultimately, that's going to be the hearing officer's decision to make and we, you know, the procedures vest them with that independent discretion because we want these procedures and this removal process to be impartial. So that is the mechanism that's been built into the process.
Thank you. And then my final question, what is the soonest possible timeline that this can be completed in and then maybe a more realistic timeline and like, what's the longest?
Again, timeliness and efficiency was one of the, the main things that we were tasked with in developing these removal procedures. So as I think one of the final slides Dick stated, the total estimated time would be three and a half months. And realistically, there's some wiggle room within the procedures that if, you know, folks are a little bit more timely and maybe don't take up all of the time required for discovery and other things, it might be a little bit quicker than that. But I think three and a half months is a pretty accurate assessment, given the procedures that we've built.
Thank you.
Mr. Mueller. Okay. So, okay, great. Are there any other questions? You know, I'll just make a comment and then I have questions for Mr. Estrada. You know, I want to just make it crystal clear today to the public that the board will not be initiating removal procedures today, as this is an informational item only and no action will be taken on this item. Is that correct, Mr. Estrada?
That is my understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. We are merely considering providing direction to staff and seeking community feedback on how the removal proceedings may be conducted moving forward. The earliest the board may approve of the final removal procedures will be April 22nd. Is that correct, Mr. Estrada?
Actually, maybe I should take that just because it's a matter of board governance. Again, absent a special meeting, that's the soonest the board could consider the item.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Nivlin. Then if the board approves final removal procedures with a four fifths vote, it will trigger a series of actions that board will take to notify the sheriff of the intent to remove and then to allow the sheriff to respond to the allegations. Is that correct, Mr. Nivlin?
That is correct. If the board were to approve, approve a notice of intent, which is the initiation stage, assuming again, these procedures are adopted.
Great. As president of the board, I want to ensure the public that this will be a measured and transparent process that will be fair to the sheriff, who deserves due process. I do have questions related to attachment A that Hanson Bridget presented, related to pre-removal conference. The language indicates that the Assistant County Executive or their designee will preside over the conference, which allows for an opportunity to respond to the allegations against the sheriff. When we say Assistant County Executive, who are we talking about and will the designee be, if we go that direction, be appointed by the Assistant County Executive or this board?
We were specifically referring to the Assistant, the current and present Assistant County Executive, Ms. Rodriguez and/or a designee that she would, that she would designate if in fact, there was a need to designate someone else. I don't think that was the contemplation, but that was the, but that's the way the, the language is structured. And of course, this is again, at this stage, draft and the board has the discretion ultimately to decide maybe a different direction is warranted in terms of who presides over that process.
Yes. I'm asking because I want to make sure that there's absolutely no conflicts of interest in any way when these proceedings are conducted. And so I do have a couple suggestions.
Yes, Mr. President.
You know, I do think we should look at some of the constitutional officers within our organization. That would be the Tax Treasurer, John Keane, who's our Chief Probation Officer, Mark Church, who is our Assessor Elections. I really want to make sure that as we move forward with this process, I know we're all prioritizing objectivity, but I think those folks should be considered. I do think, my understanding through county council, Chief Keane is not appointed by the county executive, nor is he appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Is that correct?
That's true. That appointment comes through the, the courts, in fact.
Courts. Are there, on the, the different departments that I had mentioned, how are they appointed or are they elected offices?
The two you mentioned, the treasurer, the comptroller, the assessor, those are all under our, either the Constitution or our charter elective positions.
You know, as we move forward, I think we should really see, one, I guess if there's interest from those who want to serve in that capacity. I think it's going to be critical as we move forward to ensure that this process, and I'm committed to it as the board president, making sure, and we all are, making sure that it's fair. And so what I would, I would direct county, county council to do, or county attorney, is I suggest reaching out to probation Chief Keane to see if there's potential interest because of his relationship with the court.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm actually going to shoot for willingness. I don't know, interest may be too, maybe too much to ask for, but a willingness, I can, I can certainly, you know, run that down and I certainly understand and I think it's a very worthy suggestion, so we'll, we'll work on that.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments or questions? Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to just add that I, I think that's a really good idea to consider someone else that isn't, that is also a constitutional officer and I know you mentioned our treasurer as well, Sandy Arnott. I, I think it'd be maybe a good, I actually think Chief Keane is better positioned because he's appointed by the courts and we want this to be, I think that, that's a helpful skillset to have in something like this.
Thank you supervisor. We'll definitely take that under advisement and work on it.
Thank you.
Let me just say this through the county attorney. I think Chief Keane, my understanding of Chief Keane is his background is in law enforcement. I think his background, working with the courts, may put him in the position to have judgment relative to this matter. I think Supervisor Corso is right. We're lucky to have, you know, Sandy Arnott. So there, there are well qualified candidates amongst this organization that serve as either elected appointment heads or appointed by the court. And so with that, why don't we take public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have several speakers from chambers and then we'll take speakers from Zoom. We'll start with Deacon Lauren McCombs, followed by Nancy Goodman.
Good morning to all present. We're still morning. We've made it this far. My name is Deacon Lauren Patton-McCombs. I'm currently serving at Christ Episcopal Church, Portola Valley in Woodside. I'm a member of the Peninsula Solidarity Cohort. On April 3rd, San Mateo County votes were certified and the residents of San Mateo County overwhelmingly approved Measure A. I encourage the board to act quickly to vote to remove Sheriff Corpus. Measure A has empowered the five of you with the ability to do so. This isn't a time to move slowly. It's obvious that the public, as well as our sheriff's deputies, no longer have faith in Sheriff Corpus' ability to lead the sheriff's department. I am hopeful that the board will take the necessary actions to reestablish communication, transparency and accountability within the sheriff's office. Our county is at an important crossroads to move forward in a positive way. I have faith that collectively, we can do so. My thoughts and prayers are with each one of you for your time and leadership in serving our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend McCombs.
Thank you. And next is Nancy Goodman, followed by Thomas Mazuko.
Thank you and, and thank you to all of you for taking on this important and difficult task and for coming up with the draft procedures. I'm Nancy Goodman. I live in Redwood City. I'm with Fixon San Mateo County. My only recommendation of change to consider on the draft procedures is to require under step nine, that the hearing, removal hearing be public, not let the sheriff quash that. And I say that because 84% of the voters in the county voted for Measure A, which was advertised on their billboards as remove the sheriff. So to leave us out of the removal hearing doesn't seem consistent with a vote. And, and secondly, just really expedite it for the sake of the people who work in the office. They are working in a toxic work environment. They deserve better. They need a healthy work environment. That makes for healthier actions in our community. We also need as soon as possible, a fully functioning sheriff office in case of any public safety emergency. And finally, just try to remember to put guardrails in place as you do go through this process so it doesn't happen again. Thank you so much. We're with you on this.
Thank you. Thomas Mazuko, followed by Christopher Ulrich.
Thank you, members of the Board of Supervisors and County Executive Calagi, Mr. Nivlin and Ms. Rodriguez. I'm Thomas Mazuko and I'm counsel for Sheriff Christina Corpus. It's terrible to give an attorney a one minute rule, but I'll go try as best I can. We do agree with Mr. Estrada from Hanson Bridget, that there should be impartiality and fairness and there should be process. There should be due process. And one of our concerns is, just starting with the very name of this, about this issue that we're dealing with right now, sheriff removal process. That infers that there's already a preconceived determination that sheriff will be removed. And why are we concerned about that? Because unfortunately, we're concerned about whether this board can give a fair and impartial vote on the different periods of the process. vote on the different periods of the process, based upon unfortunate, very public statements where judgment has already been made about Sheriff Corpus, about she's a liar, she should be removed, without knowing the facts, purely premised upon hearsay, a report from Judge Cordell that we have a judge looked at.
Continue, Mr. Muzuko.
Thank you. That's torn it apart. It has no evidentiary value. They're not sworn interviews. They're not tape-recorded interviews. There's no methodology as to who was interviewed. We don't know who she interviewed. We're in the dark. There is also serious mistakes that Judge Cordell has admitted to. We need an opportunity to meet with those folks. We need to have them testify under oath. And those are things, all the unfairness that's been happening. And so we know that there's been statements by this board. We know that there's statements that this board thought were private, that we do know about now. And so we're very concerned about the fairness and impartiality of this board. It's all based upon Judge Cordell's report, which is, has no evidentiary value whatsoever. Come from me, a 30-plus-year attorney, a former federal and state prosecutor, and former police commissioner, it's useless. So we wonder about that, and the bias involved.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Mazuko?
So what we're asking for, we will meet with counsel, Mr. Nivlin, and we will meet with counsel from Hanson Bridget, and we'll work on what we think would be fair. But one thing we have to do is a lot of what's governed here is under the Police Officers' Bill of Rights. Sheriff Corpus falls under Government Code Section 3301 through 3313, which are constitutional rights she has that nobody will take away, because we'll go to the other branch of government, the courts. And by the way, just one correction, these hearings are automatically closed unless the sheriff chooses to open them under po bar. Also, there's not a default position for burnt proof to preponderance. That's a default. It's clear and convincing to take away a constitutional office. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christopher Ulrich, followed by Matthew Franfeld.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Ulrich. I am also Sheriff Corpus' counsel. I urge the unbiased members of this board to reject the procedural rules that do not amount to due process. There are two issues that I'll address in my 60 seconds. The first is that, and we give credit to Mr. Estrada, it's clear that he's trying to create due process. Unfortunately, the ordinance that he was provided, the county amendment, does not permit for that. So what we have here is a board who initiates the action, their allegations, they then get it confirmed, or a hearing officer weighs in, and the board then reaffirms its own initial allegations. Then the appeal goes back to the same board for that board to render opinion. That is not an acceptable procedure, and that is what the limits were placed on Mr. Estrada by the structure of the county government. The second and equally important issue is two supervisors have already made up their minds. They told you how they would vote. Supervisors Corso and Mueller have already told us. I'd like to ask you, would a fair-minded supervisor support a system where the accusers also service the judges, where an appeal goes back to the people who originally brought the allegations? Protect your integrity and the county's reputation.
Let's wrap up.
No court will uphold these procedures. Demand a process that separates accusation from judgment and accuser from judge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker from chambers is Matthew Franfeld.
Good morning, Supervisors and colleagues. My name is Matthew Franfeld from Murphy, Pearson, Bradley &amp; Feeney, also counsel for Sheriff Corpus. I'm here to raise a serious legal concern with the structure of these proposed removal procedures. I echo the concerns of my co-counsel, as well as you have raised yourself, about the appointment of an unelected official in the pre-removal conference. This is an issue that stacks the deck against the sheriff before the process even starts. This is not due process. This is one side picking its own referee before the game begins. This injects bias into the entire process and risks shaping the board's decision before the facts are fully aired. This is especially true when the board acts as the initiating body and the final decision-maker. If the goal of this is a fair and defensible process, no findings or recommendations should be made until after the sheriff has a full and impartial hearing. Anything less raises due process concerns. It undermines the legitimacy of the entire proceeding. This structure invites the perception the outcome is predetermined. That undermines the public trust. And then these procedures create the risk elective sheriff will act less independently worried about political retaliation rather than public safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No additional comments from chambers. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public and Zoom, we're now on Item 7 as a reminder. Three hands raised. Dan Stejink, followed by Mark. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Through the clerk, this will be the last call for speakers online.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Those on Zoom, if you wish to comment for this item number seven on the draft procedures for a removal, please click Raise Hand at this time. I will announce the final name that we will take on Zoom after this next speaker, and that will be the last name that we accept from Zoom. So Dan, go ahead and begin.
Thank you. My name is Dan Stejink. I disagree with a good county council on whether or not it's timely to take action on this issue, for the simple reason that the results have not been received by Secretary of State at this moment. And had this not passed, we would not even be discussing this. I disagree with Attorney Estrada on the evidentiary requirement here. He said it's the default for a court. Preponderance evidence is default for civil court. Beyond reasonable doubt is default for criminal court, but clear and convincing is the evidentiary requirement for removing a constitutional officer. I disagree with Item 3, the Assistant County Executive being presiding over that issue. They are a direct report, as are the deputy county executives, County Executive Mike Caligi, who, with all due respect, has a current lawsuit against the sheriff for $10.5 million, being represented by Jim Hartnett, the leader of the recall group, whose prior previous court experience appears to consist solely of defending Popeye's Chicken against a woman in a wheelchair. I also disagree with Item 6, that upon receipt of a timely proposal, the board will propose the sheriff a list of at least three neutral hearing officers. This should really go out of county and go to former state judges on there. And I also suggest that the sheriff have a Sixth Amendment right to confront her accusers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Through the President, a last call has been made to raise your hand in Zoom. And so the final four speakers at this time will be Mark, Jaime Clemente, 52FGK9, and an iPhone. Mark, please unmute and begin. Mark, please unmute your microphone. Mark's iPad.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm simply concerned about the precedent this process may create and the message it will send to future elected county sheriffs and other elected officials in our county. And also, having read through the report by Judge Cordell at the very end of it, I believe she said, well, there were no laws broken, but she supports the removal of the existing sheriff. And that seemed a little strange to me. So I hope we're not violating any constitutional rights for the sheriff or anyone else in this county here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jaime or Jaime Clemente, followed by 52FGK9. Jaime or Jaime, please unmute and begin.
Hi. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for allowing me to speak. This is James Johnson, Redwood City. I've been in Redwood City for roughly about 40 years. I do think that this format lacks neutral adjudication, and the hearing officer is not guaranteed to be impartial. Moreover, the subject of constitutional elected official to a quasi-judicial removal without due process protections is in direct conflict with Goldberg versus Kelly 1970, which sets a bad standard for administrative due process. Just based off of what Alfonso said, you know, three months, three and a half months is not due process. It lacks due process, giving the option to subpoena, you know, witnesses. Well, it takes longer than, you know, a couple of weeks, right? So being able to really, you know, dive a little bit deep into both sides, slow the process down, and make sure that this is a wise decision for all parties is something that I think San Mateo County deserves. The report is flawed, and Christina Corpus deserves to, you know, confront some of the people that are accusing her.
Thank you. Our next speaker is 52FGK9, followed by iPhone. 52, please unmute and begin. You're unmuted at this time. You can go ahead and begin speaking. We're not getting any audio, so I'll go ahead and go to the next speaker and come back to you to see if you resolve that. iPhone, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Afoquin Jimenez-Hafumbe, and I'm calling, I'm very concerned about what's going on in San Mateo County. I don't know if you follow. Last week on Saturday, we had a large demonstration of thousands of people that came out to protest, you know, to protect our democracy. And I'm very concerned, disappointed in San Mateo County. Only 20% of the population in San Mateo County voted, you know, on measure A. And that's something, you know, that's said in the precedent, or like it was mentioned, about our elected officials, you know, giving the power to the county supervisors to remove Christina Corpus, who was elected by the people. She was not appointed by any of you. What happened to, you know, our democracy? What's going on to protecting our civil rights to vote and decide who's going to be representing us? So just think about, you know, think about our democracy and protecting our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. And now back to our last speaker, 52FK. Please unmute and begin. Still no sound, though you're unmuted, 52. And still no audio. I see you trying to mute and unmute, but there's no sound coming out on our end. Mr. President, I defer.
Sherri, can you try one more time for online public comment? Is there anyone else on there that we might have missed?
Sure. At this time, I'll take a final call, please, for Item Number 7 on the draft procedures for removal. Please click Raise Hand on Zoom if you'd like to comment. And 52 still has hand raised with the microphone unmuted, but there's no sound coming out.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the public comments. Do you have any colleagues have questions or comments? Start. Anyone have any questions or comments? Supervisor Corso.
Thank you. I want to reiterate, as I've said before, that, you know, being here is not something that I think anyone ever wanted. But I do think it's important that we respect the will of the voters and move forward with hearing. Well, we've already heard the proposed process. I do personally think that it is a strong and fair process. It's been a long, hard road, I think, for everyone involved. And these next steps, I think, afford fairness to our county and to everyone involved. I also want to thank the county attorney and staff and Mr. Estrada for all of their hard work in doing the difficult work of navigating uncharted waters. This is unprecedented, I would say. And that's not, that's not easy to navigate or to, it's not, it's not easy to show strong leadership in these kinds of situations. I want to thank the voters for entrusting the board. Their voices were heard loudly in this election. And I think this board will continue to maintain the trust that the county residents have put in us. And I know that it's been kind of difficult for people in our community to be unclear on what next steps would be exactly. And so I think this information that has been presented today is really important. And moving forward, I want to, you know, state that due process and fairness is something that I see as one of my core values and what informs my leadership. And I'm really grateful that this process is in line with that. It's solid. It's transparent. And it's fair. And so I do think that I want to make clear that my, I support this process, and I think our community will as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. President, I just wanted to recap what I think next actions will be. And I want to thank Supervisor Corso for the comments. We, you know, are going to, you know, take the, we've got the benefit of board direction and feedback, having heard from the public. Mr. Mazuko had indicated a desire to meet with us, and we certainly will do that. And to sort of, again, with the benefit of the input that we've received here, bring, at a future board meeting date, some revised procedures that, again, reflect the feedback that we've received and the direction we've received, and any additional things that occur to us that we think make good sense for the board to consider. And so, again, at a future board meeting, we'll bring these procedures for your adoption. And then from there, we'll, of course, look to the board for further guidance with respect to next steps thereafter. And of course, I also want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Estrada and his team for their assistance in this, in this process. But we, again, will do some more work and come back to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Estrada, can you tell us a little bit, just for the public's knowledge, your background? I think it's really important to just kind of speak to your background and what you've done over your career.
Sure. Thanks, Supervisor. So I think a big part of the reason I was brought into this process and to developing these procedures was because of my background. I started off my career as a prosecutor, actually, here in LA County. And then thereafter, I actually went to a union-side firm that represented law enforcement unions. And then thereafter, switched over to management side, and I've been working in that world ever since. I've handled hundreds of peace officer disciplinary cases, both on the union side and on management side. So I have a pretty deep understanding of due process, of po bar, of all the really important things that need to be taken into consideration when developing these procedures and affording both the sheriff and the county due process. And I have zero reservation or doubt that what we've constructed is exactly that. So thank you, Supervisor, for asking me to share that, because this area of law is my life's work, and I take it very seriously. And I'm very proud of the work we did for the county.
Great. Thank you very much. Through the county attorney, can you speak a little to, if the public wants to be informed and educated on this process, is there a website? Is there a place they could go? Or is it just through our agendas? What are we doing to make sure that we're informing the public on what is going on? Is there...
What a great question. Yeah, the short answer is currently, the, you know, the response would be that it's through the agendas and the documents that we've, you know, posted in connection with agendized items. But it is good food for thought for us. Is it appropriate for us maybe to have a more accessible place where folks can go where everything is? Again, it's, you know, of course, our practice would be to, if we're going to do something like that, just to have it there and, you know, without, without comment or without commentary, but just so it's available for folks to see. We can certainly work on that if that's something the board would like us to spend a little time on, is figuring out, again, a portal or something where people can go to find the stuff and be up to date on kind of where we are in the process.
Great. Thank you very much. This was an informational item. I want to thank our public speakers for speaking. And we're going to conclude. We're going to, through county council, do we have anything to report out on?
Will, would...
Okay. Hold on one sec. Hold on one sec. Go ahead.
Well, a couple of things I was going to say. If we were going to go to, if we wanted to change the order of the agenda so that we were going to do closed session during the lunch hour, I'd probably want to entertain a motion to reorder the agenda to do closed session during the break that we're about to take. And there would, to my knowledge, be nothing to report out.
Okay.
But, but we can always determine that after a conversation in closed session.
I'm going to give you 20 seconds. 20 seconds, Mr. Mizuko. 20 seconds. Real quick.
Thank you. In response to Mr. Estrada, our group that's representing the sheriff, I was a federal prosecutor for 10 years, an assistant DA in San Francisco for 10 years. But for the last 12 and a half years, I presided over every disciplinary case for the San Francisco Police Department. And the attorney in this case, Jim LaSart, most of the cases cited by Mr. Estrada were argued by James LaSart.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, are we reporting out? I don't think we are, are we?
Well, we're going to come back in any event, so. But I would again ask for a motion to, to change the order of the agenda if, if again, the intent is to do closed session during our lunch break here.
So move. Do you need more words than that?
Nope. Just a second. And then a vote.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Okay. It's unanimous then.
Yes, that's unanimous. And the board, the time is now 12:11 PM, and the board is currently in recess. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Members of the public, we'll start in about 30 seconds. Okay, President Canepa. The time is now 1:23 PM, and we're back in open session. And for the record, Supervisors Mueller and Supervisor Spear are absent. Back to you.
Passes us to item eight. Adopt an ordinance in section 7.04025. Speed limit 25 miles per hour and 7.04030. Speed limit 30 miles per hour of chapter 7.04 of title seven of the San Mateo County Ordnance Code. Great to see you again, Ms. Stillman.
And before you go, Ms. Stillman, just for the record, I think you already mentioned there was nothing to report out, right?
Correct.
That is true. Nothing to report out of closed session. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Canepa, honorable members of the board, Mr. Caligi and Mr. Niblin. I am here to present on adoption of an ordinance establishing 25 mile an hour speed limit on a portion of Santa Cruz Avenue. I have a very short presentation here. Thank you, Suki, for pulling that up. This is just a location map to get you oriented. The area is sort of shown in pink or peach is the unincorporated area of West Menlo Park. And the road that I'm speaking about today is Santa Cruz Avenue. And you can see the limits there. They're outlined in dashed red. Santa Cruz Avenue, this segment of Santa Cruz Avenue has an existing speed limit of 30 miles an hour. We've taken a look at that segment and compared it against the options that we have in the vehicle code for reducing the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. And because it is primarily residential and it meets the definition of a local street, we are recommending that the speed limit be set for 25 miles an hour on this segment of roadway. This is a recommendation in terms of the ordinance before you establishing 25 miles an hour on Santa Cruz Avenue between Alameda de Las Pulgas and the corporate limits of the city of Menlo Park. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Great. Are there any questions for Ms. Stillman? Ms. Stillman, quick question. I know at one time Supervisor Mueller and I have talked to you about looking at school zones, I think, from 15 miles to 25 miles an hour. Can you provide us an update on where we're at relative to those discussions?
Okay. So in that work, one of the things we did was we brought to the board of supervisors an ordinance that gave us the ability to establish 15 and 20 mile an hour speed limits in connection with schools primarily. And we are working with a consultant who has given us a proposal to take a look at that and evaluate all of the schools within the unincorporated area. Excuse me, I think their proposal was due last week.
Great. Thank you for your wonderful work on that and for taking board feedback. With that, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public on Zoom, please click to comment for item number eight for an ordinance on prima facie speed limits. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Mueller and Spear being absent.
Great. Thank you very much. We next move to item nine, which is a resolution regarding implementation and partnership with the Resource Conservation District of planned forestry management projects in Pescadero Creek County Park using CAL FIRE forest health grants and authorize the Parks District to enter into an agreement with the Resource Conservation District to offset the cost of these projects by selling raw felled timber from the projects. This is a very great item, interesting item. Mr. Calderon.
President Canepa, honorable board members, Mr. Niblin. Good morning. My name is Nicholas Calderon, and I am the director of the San Mateo County Parks Department. Today, the Parks Department is very excited to present to you a forest health and fuel reduction project at Pescadero Creek County Park. Certainly, this is the most innovative and impactful stewardship project the department has ever undertaken. Not only have we scoped the project to mitigate the threats of wildfire, but also to improve the ecological health and function of the forest, which allows it to be more resilient to climate change as well as sequester greater levels of carbon. We've also put together a very innovative funding mechanism, which we're excited to discuss with you today. So Assistant Director Hannah Oremshaw will be giving the presentation today, and then we'll be available for questions. So thank you very much.
Good afternoon, honorable supervisors, County Executive Caligi, County Attorney Niblin. Thank you for the time to present today. I'm Hannah Oremshaw, the Assistant Director for the San Mateo County Parks Department. And I'll be presenting on our planned forest health and fuel reduction project in Pescadero Creek County Park and the outcomes for the forest ecosystems that we want to see as a result of the work we're planning. So Pescadero Creek County Park has been in our park system since the 1970s, but prior to this was owned by the Santa Cruz Lumber Company. And during this time, intensive logging occurred throughout the property. And also through that time, most of the old growth redwoods that were present were cut. The trees that have grown back are a lot more dense, younger, thinner trees. They're less healthy overall and more vulnerable to disturbances. And this was made apparent when the CZU Lightning Complex fire occurred in 2020, which impacted about 50% of the park. And so after this wildfire, and given the logging history and a lack of active forest management that's occurred, the Parks Department developed a climate and habitat resiliency plan for the park. And so the overarching goal for the climate and habitat resiliency plan is to promote and enhance the forest habitats within Pescadero Creek County Park so that they're resilient in the face of disturbance and climate change. We aim to protect biodiversity and habitat, mitigate the risk of wildfires, make forests healthier and more resilient, increase carbon sequestration, and conduct monitoring, research, and education. The work we have planned is the same as what other land managers in our region are doing for redwood forest restoration. And this includes State Parks, Mid Penn, Peninsula Open Space Trust, as well as Save the Redwoods League and Semper Virens Fund, whose missions are to restore and protect redwood forests. And our climate and habitat resiliency plan was developed with input from members of these organizations. So when we talk about forest resilience, what does this mean? A resilient forest is one that is more diverse, with trees that are larger, more spaced out, healthier, less dense. Because of these characteristics, a more resilient forest is more capable of surviving or overcoming a wildfire because there are fewer ladder fuels, less dead or dying vegetation, and a less dense forest overall. In the event a wildfire does occur, the fire would ideally spread more slowly and less intensely. And in short, you would hope for the fire to behave more like the right-hand photo than the left-hand photo. Climate change is a major driver for the impacts on forests. It can increase the chances for drought, increase the impacts of disease or pests, and create more conditions in which wildfire could occur. And so the work we're planning will put redwood and Douglas fir trees on a trajectory where they can increase in size, become more resilient, and over time be able to return to the old growth forests that used to define this landscape. The figure here is from the Save the Redwoods League State of the Redwoods Report, and it shows that only a small proportion of redwood forests in California that remain are considered old growth forests. And this is true for Pescadero Creek as well. We have a few pockets of old growth forest, but due to the logging history, a lot more of these areas are considered intermediate second growth. And the biggest limiting factor for growth within these second growth stands is that there's an over competition for resources with these very densely spaced trees. And so by conducting selective removal in these stands, we can allow for these trees to grow bigger and more healthy by creating more space to grow and have more access to resources like water, light, and soil nutrients. To accomplish this, it is necessary to take an active management approach. Studies have shown that Mother Nature alone is unable to get heavily logged forests back to pre-logged conditions without conducting active restoration. And additionally, the potential for an extreme wildfire to reoccur threatens forest survival. We also want old growth redwoods because they're world champions for carbon sequestration. They store more above-ground carbon than any other tree species. And one old growth tree is much better for carbon storage than many small ones. Old growth trees also provide critical bird nesting habitat for the endangered marbled marillet. And so by helping improve their habitat, we can also help with species recovery. And so we recognize the need for technical expertise and skilled project management for this work. And so we partnered with the San Mateo Resource Conservation District to assist. The RCD is specially positioned to work across boundaries with multiple landowners. And so a landscape-scale forest management effort was envisioned. And this includes similar work on the neighboring Camp Jones Gulch property, which Semper Virens Fund holds a conservation easement over. These two properties, Pescadero Creek and Camp Jones Gulch, also provide important linkages to other active management that is occurring throughout the region with connectivity to other projects in Butino and Big Basin State Parks, LaHonda Creek Open Space Preserve, and others. The RCE was awarded a $5.5 million grant from the CAL FIRE Forest Health Grant Program. And of this, around 3.9 million is for the work in Pescadero Creek County Park. There's a total of 541 acres of work planned, and this is shown in green on the map. The first phase will involve 431 acres of understory vegetation removal through mechanical mastication. And the second phase is selective thinning of the forest stand across 110 acres, which would then be followed by understory mastication. And that's shown with the gray hatched area more on the west side of the park. And I'll go into more detail on these methods in the next slides. So these next images help illustrate the condition of the park forests as well as what work will look like on the ground. What you see here is an area of the forest off of Old Hall Road that's really representative of this post-logging second growth forest that we see throughout the park. Tree stands like this can have upwards of 300 trees per acre. Additionally, all of the forested areas south of Old Hall Road are, were within the burn footprint of the CZU fire. Comparatively, this is one of the pockets of old growth forest within the park. And you can see the difference between these two pictures. The last forest was very dark, brown, dense, a lot more dead branches on the trees and on the ground. While this forest is very lush and green, there's more light, more space, and a lot more growth in the understory. Regarding the treatment methods planned, these images show the understory mastication work that recently occurred in nearby Butino State Park and what would occur throughout the project area at Pescadero Creek. The left side is before and the right side is after. This work focuses on reducing density in the understory by removing vegetation that's eight inches in diameter or less. And this is beneficial from a fuel reduction and forest health perspective as it helps reduce fuel load, it breaks up the continuity of horizontal and vertical fuels that contribute to the ability for a fire to spread. And it removes dead or unhealthy vegetation that's built up over time. And this work's done using equipment such as masticators, which have a grinding head, and they break up the woody material into small pieces and leave a mulch layer on the ground surface. These images show selective thinning forest restoration work that occurred in Redwood State and National Park. Again, with the left being before and right after. The thinning we plan to conduct will focus on selective removal of trees between 18 to 30 inches in diameter. And this is to reduce the overall stand density and what's targeted to meet our restoration goals. Currently, a lot of the forest stands in our park have anywhere from 200 to 300 trees per acre, whereas the target density would be closer to 100 to 150 trees per acre. And so to identify the trees for thinning, this would involve having a forester walk through these forest stands and marking trees based off of what looks unhealthy or healthy, the overall sizes of trees, and then the clustering of trees within the stand. And this is being guided by the parameters that are set in the climate and habitat resiliency plan. And so specifically for trees that are between 18 to 30 inches, we would keep at least 50% of trees this size and not remove anything larger. And this is a maximum threshold for removal. We would likely be more conservative than this, keeping more trees, considering this a first entry and allowing time for the forest to adapt and then return in 10 years or so to consider whether additional thinning is needed to meet our goals. Regarding the thinning work, another aspect is regarding this cost offset and the form of timber value. When adopting the climate and habitat resiliency plan, the Board of Supervisors expressed a willingness to sell timber that resulted from forest health or fuel reduction projects. And this was provided that these trees were only removed to benefit the ecological function of the forest or to mitigate wildfire threat and that they're not being removed for their commercial value. And also that any revenue that would be generated from the sale of timber would be used only for the direct benefit of forest restoration within Pescadero Creek County Park. And so in the spirit to offset a portion of the project cost, it's proposed that a licensed timber operator, who would conduct the selective thinning activities, would be allowed to remove any felled redwood or Douglas fir trees that cannot be left on site for mulch or habitat features. And this timber operator would offset their costs with revenue that's generated from the sale of this timber. And then any revenue above that amount would be returned to the project to offset other project costs. So 100% of the revenue is going toward implementing this forest management work. And it's anticipated that the value of the wood would enable us to implement about 20% more restoration work than would be possible without it. And as a note, it would be the responsibility of a registered professional forester to mark the trees for removal and that the timber operator would not have influence over which trees are removed or retained. If sale is not considered, the only alternatives aside from this would be to haul off the wood to be processed in an air curtain burner or disposed of in a green waste facility, both of which would be an added cost to the project and would be a net county cost. And so we see this as a really innovative funding strategy and one that we are using for the first time and really is a great opportunity for us when doing this important work. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I, maybe I don't have a question, but I'll just say very briefly that I want to thank you and Nick for meeting with me to go over this because when you first kind of see the agenda title, it's a little concerning. But when you see the visuals and when you understand all of the thought and care that's been put into this process and I think, I can't remember her name, but the, I think the ED of the Resource Conserv-- oh, you're right there. I'm so sorry. I just remember you saying that. I just remember you saying that you kind of spoke in a language I don't hear too often, which is just saying that like, it's kind of helping to restore the forest back to like its pre-colonial norm. And I think that's kind of a very beautiful thing, and the pictures really make it very clear what that looks like and why it's important, and how we're kind of helping to heal the forest so that it can be what it was intended to be for future generations. So thank you all for that, for all of your work on this. And also want to share that the San Mateo County Democratic Party recently passed a resolution opposing one of the two options that you talked about, like if this isn't how we move forward, what the other two options are, especially-- so it's essentially like around burning organic matter and what that, how that is really harmful to the environment for many, many, many reasons. So thank you for your work, and I still want to get my boots on and go hike and see what's out there. So would love to do that.
Absolutely.
Great. Supervisor Gochet.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the presentation. It is so good to see you all, and thank you for stopping by my office and giving us this presentation as well. It does make sense if we can sell the wood to offset the cost. So again, I appreciate the great work that you're doing and really glad that we had an opportunity to sit down together.
All right. Great. Thank you. I just really want to thank staff, Kellerec's. I really want to thank you for just your leadership on this issue. Forest management is extraordinarily important. Can you talk a little bit about, through this relationship, on the cost of the timber? How much are we saving? I mean, I know, you know, the county, as well as other counties, are looking at efficiencies. And what's the percentage of the timber costs that actually go into funding the removal? Do you know?
So the estimated value for the timber to be removed is around $550,000. And the cost for the actual removal work is about half of that, about $275,000. So we're actually, the revenue is in addition, like above and beyond the cost to actually remove the trees. And so that actually will come back to the project to fund other work, like the mastication portion of the project. So it reduces the overall cost of doing other portions of the work in addition to doing the thinning work. So we're actually seeing, you know, the ability to do more work by having this revenue.
Well, that's fantastic. No, thank you, Hannah. Kellerec, would you like to say a couple of words? Please come on up. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're so, you're so good in this space.
Well, yeah, I hadn't thought of any-- I mean, I'm just excited about this because for all of California, let alone San Mateo County, to meet its forest management goals, we have to have innovative strategies to achieve the pace and scale that's needed to protect biological diversity and communities, both, you know, public safety and ecosystem function. And this is a really great example of partnerships, getting work done at scale, getting work done strategically, doing it well, and having innovative funding solutions. Because, you know, the funding, the grant funding that's available is not enough to be able to do all the work that's needed to be done, or with the quality that we want to do at the level of care that we want to bring. So I'm really excited about the partnership.
Great. Thank you so much. And thank you for your emphasis on the grant funding. It seems that this innovative, creative solution really helps us solve a large part of the financial puzzle of making sure that we have correct forest management. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public on Zoom, please click to comment for item number nine for planned forest management in Pescadero County Park. Please click Raise Hand. No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Corso.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Gochet, and President Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Spear and Mueller being absent.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Nicholas. Good job. Hannah, great presentation. We'll now move to our next item, item 10, which is a resolution supportive of SB 326, the California Wildfire Mitigation Strategic Planning Act. I want to recognize our staff, want to thank Connie and her team for the wonderful work they continue to do. This item comes to us from Supervisor Mueller and from myself. Today, we have an opportunity to take a strong stance in support of proactive wildfire prevention mitigation across California. I, along with Supervisor Mueller, am proud to present this resolution supportive of SB 326. Sponsor is Senator Becker, the California Wildlife Mitigation Strategic Planning Act, a bill that will enhance our state's ability to plan, prepare, and protect communities from the growing threat of wildfires. We all know that San Mateo County is not immune to the devastation that wildfire can bring. The CZU lighting complex fire of 2020, feels like it's yesterday, burned over 80,000 acres, destroying homes, businesses, and critical infrastructure, including 1,800 acres in Pescadero Creek alone. Fires like this just don't damage property, displace families, disrupt local economies, and put lives at risk. Climate change has only accelerated the severity and frequency of these disasters, and we cannot afford to be caught off guard. SB 326 aims to take a strategic, data-driven approach to wildfire mitigation, ensuring that state and local governments work together to plan for prevention efforts, fuel reduction, and emergency response. This bill provides a framework for long-term wildfire risk reduction, improving the way we assess fire-prone areas, allocate resources, and coordinate efforts statewide. In supporting SB 326, we are advocating for more funding for wildfire prevention, including vegetation management and defenseful space programs, a stronger regional collaboration, ensuring local agencies like ours have a voice in state wildfire policy, and a long-term science-based strategy rather than reactive, short-term fixes. Here in San Mateo County, we have already taken important steps to fire mitigation, but we must continue pushing for policies that strengthen our preparedness and free up critical resources for local efforts. This bill aligns with the work we've already begun, and I strongly urge my colleagues to support this resolution. Wildfires don't wait for us to act. Let's be proactive in protecting our communities. We do have potentially on the line, but she may have left us, Leslie Spahn. Can you check? She was supposed to be with us at 1:00, but the time is 1:48. She's with Senator Becker's office.
Madam Clerk, could you check for that, see if she's available?
Yes, I don't see, I don't see Les on the line at this time, unless under a different name could raise hand, but I don't see the name.
I apologize to Senator Becker's staff. We had closed session, the meeting was longer than normal, but appreciate their efforts to try to attend. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Yes.
I have a question. And recognizing that we don't have staff on the line to answer if it's like super detailed, but I'm just curious, like, what does this change from like what the status quo is now?
Yeah, I think, Connie, if you could come up for a second, I'll have Connie speak to the bill a little. Can you address Supervisor Corso's question? And thank you for attending, Connie.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Through the chair, Supervisor Corso, this bill provides the first opportunity to do a statewide framework, which isn't something that's currently happening. So this would be the first opportunity for the state to begin to report in on what they're doing, both privately and publicly, in terms of wildfire mitigation.
Thank you. And do you happen to know if other, like, has CSAC taken a position on this?
No, they haven't taken a position on it. I know they're looking at it, and I do know that this bill is part of a 13-bill package that is a statewide wildfire mitigation package that's being put forward by leadership. So they're looking at all of those bills to make a determination on whether or not to support.
Thank you.
Connie, I do have a question since you're up there. Can you speak a little bit to the economic challenges relative to what happened in Palisades and how that has an effect on the state budget? Because my understanding is the legislator is looking at potentially putting in an additional $2 billion or taking $2 billion to help fund some of the initiatives happening in Los Angeles County. Do you know a little bit about that?
I do know that there are discussions happening currently with regards to how to respond economically to what happened in Southern California, both the Eaton and the Pacific Palisades fire. Independent of what's happening in terms of Proposition 4, and how those funds will also be used to set up wildfire mitigation planning and activities. So those discussions are happening currently, and, but of course, everything right now is being carefully debated and monitored in light of everything that's going on with the state budget.
You know, one of the things that I was really able to take out of the Palisades fire is the importance of collaboration amongst various counties. I mean, these fires, and we saw it with CZU, it's Santa Cruz County, it's San Mateo County. And so this work is needed. And I want to thank you and your staff for really the work that you have done in working with our legislators and our different lobbying groups here, both at the federal and state level. So thank you, Connie. Supervisor Gochet.
Connie, before you leave, thank you so much. This is just a general question for me, and it's my understanding that there currently isn't, there's an unknown fiscal impact for the county. But do we anticipate, if this bill is to pass, additional staff or DEM?
So this bill does not currently have a state appropriation. So, you know, we call it an unfunded mandate, for lack of a better way to describe it. The bulk of the work will fall to DEM to have to do if this bill is signed by the governor. So I think at that point, it is up to the department head to determine how best to respond, and whether or not she has existing resources to be able to provide the information that would be needed in order to begin to put together this framework. And then, of course, discussions with the county executive on whether or not additional resources might be needed.
Thank you.
All right. With that, thank you, Connie. Do we have a motion on the table? Or a public comment? I know there's no one there, I can guarantee you. I guarantee it.
There's no one from chambers, so there you go. Madam Clerk, please check on Zoom.
Public on Zoom, please click Raise Hand to comment for item 10 regarding Senate Bill No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right. Can I have a motion on this item?
Through the chair, I make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of Senate Bill 326.
Second.
We'll take the roll calls, Supervisor Corso.
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Gochet.
Yes.
And President Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Spear and Mueller being absent.
All right. We're on our final item. It's item 11. We'll now move to our next item alone, which is to nominate a member of the Board of Supervisors to represent the Central Coastal Region of the California Coastal Commission. Mr. Niblin.
Thank you. As the staff report reflects, the county, I believe it was the county executive, maybe it was the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, received correspondence from Speaker Rivas's office, asking the Board of Supervisors, and by the way, the City Selection Committee, two different bodies, for the names of potential appointees to the California Coastal Commission. It's a, so pursuant to the Public Resources Code, when there is a vacancy, and the appointment is from the state assembly speaker, correspondence goes out, soliciting essentially potential nominees for appointment. And so it was my conclusion, working with the clerk of the board, that it would make sense to agendize this for a discussion, to ascertain whether or not there was any interest in a nomination, or the name being forwarded from this body to the Speaker of the State Assembly for potential nomination to the Coastal Commission. So that's the purpose of today's conversation.
Great. Let me just, you know, for the record, County Executive Mike Calley and I, Callagie and I, received a letter from the Speaker of the Assembly, Robert Rivas, March 4th, requesting nominations by the Board of Supervisors and the City Selection Committee for an appointment to the California Coastal Commission pursuant to Section 30301.2 of the Public Resources Code. This provision requires the Assembly Speaker to solicit nominations from respective board and committee. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak with Supervisor Mueller. Supervisor Mueller has expressed that he is not interested in this seat. Tomorrow, the City Selection Committee is meeting at 2:00 p.m. to nominate an individual for coastal commissioner consideration. The City Selection Committee is comprised of mayors of all 20 incorporated cities, towns in San Mateo County, and I believe, speaking with Half Moon Mayor, Vice Mayor Debbie Ruddock, is the only council member that has applied for the position, if I'm not mistaken. Ruddock, of course, is very qualified to be nominated for this position, as she is the current Chair of One Shoreline. What's before us today, County Attorney Niblin, is, it's a mandate that we take this vote, but we could choose not to make a nomination, that's one. And two, my understanding, talking with you, is that we could not choose someone outside of the Board of Supervisors, because that's not the action item before us. Is that correct?
That's true. You could not nominate someone else. I mean, I think you could articulate, as you already have, that you think that the City Selection Committee's proposal is a good one, but you couldn't nominate that individual yourself. That's not within the item that was agendized. That's true.
And therefore, we wouldn't have to take action on the item. Is that correct?
You could decline to take action on the item, you could decline to nominate anybody from your body, particularly if there was nobody who's interested in being nominated, if that was--
Thank you, Supervisor Corso.
So my understanding is that we could ask that someone be a-- well, first of all, what's the deadline for this?
It's, I believe it's the 18th, if I remember correctly.
Of April.
That the nominations have to be submitted by.
Of April.
That sounds right. It was 45 days from the date of receipt of the letter, so I don't recall the exact date of receipt of the letter. That's correct.
Okay. Well, and we're not able to nominate a supervisor from the counties that are listed in the item?
Correct.
I believe that's right. Let me double-check. I've got the statute here in front of me.
I believe we would be nominating a supervisor to the Central Coast Region.
That's true.
Which includes San Mateo County, Santa Cruz County, and Monterey County.
That's true. I'm just looking again for your particular action.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm seeing on the item, so let me explain why I'm asking these questions. So in, when Supervisor Mueller and I started on as supervisors, we were in, or I was in a cohort of new supervisors training through CSAC, and I met our neighboring county's new supervisor, Justin Cummings, who has a PhD in, I think, microbiology, works with UC Santa Cruz, is former, I think, current or former Chair of the California Coastal Commission. And so I'd like to move forward with nominating him to continue on the California Coastal Commission. He is, you know, continuing, would be continuing work. And I believe under his leadership, the California Coastal Commission has been able to work more effectively and collaboratively with other jurisdictions. I will also add that he is supportive of responsible housing development on the coast, supportive of coastal adaptation, resilience work, and supports planning for sea-level rise in multiple phases to allow for work to be started sooner rather than waiting later and deferring it and trying to do it all at once. And so I, he's a renter, an environmental scientist, and has been a really strong leader, both in Santa Cruz, but also in, I would say, in our state. So I do believe that, I don't want to speak for Supervisor Mueller, but I do believe that he is supportive of this as well. And so unfortunate, he's not here right now, but I would-- I would really appreciate our board taking that action today, and I, and I do believe that we are able to, based on how I'm reading the, the item.
Through the county attorney, do you have any thoughts? I just want to make sure we're doing everything correct, and before we, you know, and maybe you need, needed additional time, what I could do is maybe we could take public comment?
Through the chair, may I mention one thing that Supervisor Mueller asked me in his absence to mention, that he'll be writing a personal letter of support for Vice Mayor Ruddock, notwithstanding with Supervisor Corso.
What I would note is that, reading the, the Public Resources Code, as it does note that in regions composed of three counties, and I believe actually San Mateo, we, we are in a region composed of three counties, San Mateo County, Santa Cruz County, and Monterey County, the, excuse me, the Board of Supervisors and the City Selection Committee of each county within the region shall nominate supervisors, mayors, or city council members who reside in the region from which the, you know, and basically, again, in a situation, we would appoint one or more supervisors and one or more mayors or city council members. So, the, the Board of Supervisors and each, and the City Selection Committee would appoint one or more, or nominate one or more supervisors and one or more mayors of city or city council members. I think that the, there isn't anything explicit that requires that the supervisor actually reside in the particular county from which the nomination comes, so I want to validate what Supervisor Corso is indicating. And as I read it, the explicit terms, I guess, would not prevent a nomination of, of a city council member by the Board of Supervisors if it chose to. I think that the, one interpretation of the, of the text is that it would be expected that the Board of Supervisors would be nominating supervisors, and the City Selection Committee would be selecting or nominating members of city councils, but I, as I parse the language, I think a reasonable case can be made that the Board of Supervisors could in fact nominate a member of a city council here in the county.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much. You know, let me just say, you know, I'm going to probably end up supporting Half Moon Bay Vice Mayor Debbie Ruddock. I've worked with Debbie on numerous issues. I don't know the supervisor personally, but it seems like someone who's extraordinarily knowledgeable, but I, I do think San Mateo County represent, representation is important. I know Debbie for a number of years, and she's done a lot of great work on the coast. And so, I'll be voting no on the, is, what is his name again? Justin?
Yeah, I'd like to just add a little bit more information. So, Justin Cummings, when he was elected to the Board of Supervisors in November of 2022, became the first African American to serve on the Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors, and I want to get his education background correct. So, he has a P, he has a PhD in ecology and evolutionary biology, and bachelor's degrees in Spanish and biology, and he still works, I, I think, like is teaching at US, UCSC. And I believe we are able to nominate more than one person, but we cannot nominate a city council member because that's not what's allowed for this board, correct?
Actually, I was just kind of parsing along, two things I'd, I'd say, one is I want to, again, confirm that you could in fact nominate more than one person. I, I think that a reasonable interpretation could be made of the, of the text here, that the Board of Supervisors could nominate a mayor or a city council member if it chose to, and again, you could nominate more than one individual if you chose to.
Through the chair, I would make a recommendation that we move them both forward. I have worked with Debbie Ruddock on One Shoreline and with a lot of the flood work that we're doing here in the region, so she's very engaged in our county, and I think she's also a good option, but my recommendation is to move them both forward.
Wonderful. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Nominating Santa Cruz Supervisor Jennings and-
Cummings.
Oh, Cummings, Cummings, and Half Moon Bay Vice Mayor Debbie Ruddock. Okay, I'll take the roll call, Supervisor Corso.
Do we take public comment?
Oh, good idea. Thank you.
Ah!
Yes. Okay. Any speakers from chambers? I don't see any hands. So, Madam Click, please proceed.
Thank you, those on Zoom. Please click raise hand to comment on item 11. We have one hand for Cindy Abbott. Please unmute Cindy and begin.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. I thank you for your service. I'm speaking today from my hometown, the beautiful San Mateo County Coastal Community of Pacifica. As a lifelong coastal resident, I would like to see the Board of Supervisors put forward a recommendation and support for the current Chair of the California Coastal Commission, Justin Cummings. Chair Cummings has admirably, really filled the seat previously held by our own former supervisor Carol Grum, who held the seat prior to her terming out. Cummings, as an elected official, understands the needs of coastal communities, having served as past Mayor of Santa Cruz and currently a member of the Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors. He's also a scientist focused on natural processes and understands coastal dynamics. After only two years, the respect for Cummings is clear, with his peers on the CCC nominating him to be the Chair this year. Chair Cummings should be able to continue his important work serving on the Coastal Commission. Please give him your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. No further hands, Mr. President.
All right. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
And President Kenapa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Spear and Mueller being absent.
All right. Want to thank everyone for coming today, and with that, we'll adjourn.